All right. Good afternoon, everybody. We're going to go ahead and call today's workshop to order. This is the Flagler County Board of County Commissioners on Monday, March 17, 2025. It is 1:01 PM. We are here without Ms. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson. Hopefully, she's on her way. We'll announce when she gets here. But if everybody could stand for the pledge of the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will take a brief moment of silence. This is a time for individual prayer, reflection, or meditation. We take this time to honor and remember our first responders and the men and women in our military who keep us safe and protect our freedoms at home and abroad. All righty. Thank you again, everybody, for being here. We've got a few items on today's workshop. We're going to go over Capitol Projects, a discussion on annexation, and continue our talk on the comprehensive plans. So first up will be Capitol Projects' update. Mr. Salinas is here today. Afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Commissioners. We'll be covering about 10 different projects that are part of our Capitol program here in Flagler County. Okay, the first project we have is Fire Station 51, which is the fire station that is located between State Road 100 and County Road 305. This is a fire station that is approximately 10,000 square feet. The design and construction is Schenckel-Schultz. The design of this fire station is 90% complete. We also have that this is going to be replacing the fire station that is currently located in Espanola. And this fire station also provides a template for us to reuse in future fire stations as well. So it is a design that we'll be able to leverage for reducing the cost moving forward. The project budget for this project, for this fire station, is close to $7 million. This is $7 million. Part of that comes from the half-cent sales tax. So we have also that this actual project started, was funded back in 2022, October 21, which is FY '22. We selected the architect and CMAR back in late 2024. The CMAR was selected. We also have that the reading here a little bit. We have that the design is expected to be completed in the spring this year. And then we go for the bid for the construction. And then awarded will be, the awarded construction will be in the summer of 2025, with expected completion of winter of 2026 for Station 51. Now, Station 50 is what we call the, it's the fire headquarters for Flagler County. The design of this, the project status is 60% design. This will be a 12,000-square-feet fire station. It'll be located here across the Government Service Building. Also, it's managed by, the design-construction is Schenckel-Schultz. The department that is managing and we're seeing this construction is the Engineering Department under Hamid. And we have, this project is approximately $12.4 million. It's $12.4 million. We have $10 million of state appropriation that came in. And I believe it was last year. And we have about $1.9 million that is coming in from the general fund and about $500,000 that are coming in from the half-cent sales tax. So we have the architect's been selected. The CMAR has been selected as of October of this, October 2024. We have the bid for construction for this station also in the summer of 2025. And the award would be in summer of '25, with the expected completion date of winter of 2026, similar to what we have for Station 51.
Jorge?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Would you tell me what CMAR means?
Construction Manager at Risk.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jorge, one other question because I haven't recently looked at a map. But does the fire station that's there now, does that go away?
That fire station that we have there is a fire station that was
We remodeled that and
Yeah, it was an agreement between the City of Bonnell and Flagler County. So it's provided to the Flagler County. We're going to be keeping it for the logistics operation.
Okay, so this is just west of there.
You're talking about the one here, the new?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, this is going to stay there. It's going to be for logistics.
Okay, so this is going to be just west of
Yeah, a little bit west, northwest of.
Got it.
It's behind the, behind that old fire station, basically.
Thanks.
A quick question back, and you don't have to flip back, but is there any plans with the old Espanola building? Will that be demolished or?
Yeah, that, the plan is just to demolish that one.
Okay.
Because that's, I believe that's in the right-of-way. Yeah, so that'll be taken off. The next project is the SMA project, we call it. It's located off Old Hawk Creek in Justice Lane. It's going to be a 24-hour facility with public parking and staff parking. It'll be a 48-bed integrated civilization unit and mens residential substance abuse. It's 70% design at this moment. And the Engineering Department is also overseeing this project. The project will be a, one of those public-private partnerships that we've been involved in in some of our projects. It's actually located across from the women's residential facility that they have, the women's treatment facility they have for SMA. And the, we had, we received a $10 million appropriation, legislative appropriation for this project. And what SMA is contributing another $4 million to actually come up with the 48-bed in a larger facility than was planned for. So that's why the project budget is, project budget is $14 million. So we have $10 million from the legislative appropriation and $4 million that the SMA board approved for this project. So this one is another one that the CMAR was selected in December of '24. We're expecting the design to be completed in the spring of this year and then awarding construction in the summer of 2025 and then start construction in the fall with completion of this project in the winter of 2026. Project number four is the Flagler Nexus Center. This is located across the Sheriff's Operations Center. This is a approximately 22,000-square-foot building. It's a multi-purpose facility that would house the new library, the replacement of the Bonnell Library. And it would also include the administration offices for the library staff. It also will include the county's Health and Human Services Department. And it would also contain a large conference room and community center. The benefits of this project is that it will be, as it, as part of the library, it'll be supporting education, workforce development, fostering innovation, serving, servicing, serving a community as a community hub for civic engagement, collaboration, and emergency response. On the social side, services side, it will provide housing assistance to the residents that need that service, essential social services, and dedicated senior programs. This project has been, is 100% design. It's at 55% construction. It's a $16.2 million project, of which there's multiple sources that make up this budget. We have some general fund that has been allocated. There's been $4 to $5 million in grant that Holly's been able to secure for this project. We have library impact fees. And there's also revenues from the passport program that Holly has at the library that's also contributed to this project. So we're expecting this project, it actually construct, the construction began in July '24 and the expected completion date is November of 2025. And the top is a rendering and the bottom is how it's looking as of probably last week. Okay, project number five is the Flagler Executive Airport Terminal. This project was designed way back in 2018. It's been just sitting on the shelves, so it's been thought about a while back. This is a project that consists of a construction of an airport terminal of about 15,000-square-feet facility. It will serve as our Flagler Executive Airport in FBO, which stands for Field-Based Operator. Some of the benefits of this project includes the new general aviation terminal, or FBO, designed to enhance the services for pilots, businesses, and visitors. Will feature some office and conference room and pilot's lounge and office space available for lease and provide a premier aviation hub for our growing community. This also is funded through multiple grants. We have state legislative grant. We have FDOT funding and then some airport funding to make up the $11.8 million. So as I mentioned earlier, the design was backed in summer of 2018. The bid for construction was this fall of 2024. The award for construction was in December 2024. Recently, as soon as, back in January or earlier this year, January 2025, the bid for the CIE. And then also, we had the construction, approval for the construction contract last month, February 2025. We're expecting this project to be, to start construction in April and to be completed by November of 2026. This is also in, this is a project managed by the airport. Project number six is a multi-purpose emergency shelter. This is a project that consists of 10,000-square-foot, at least 10,000-square-foot multi-purpose facility. Given that we have a legislative appropriation of $10 million, we're going to try to maximize the square footage in this metal building. But at least it's going to be 10,000 square feet. It's going to serve as a primary special needs shelter for hurricane and consolidated shelter for both post-hurricane and non-hurricane evacuations. The project benefits for this construction, this project will be, be located in 100 acres of state land. The new multi-purpose facility will be made available for public use, rental, and can accommodate the use of multiple public events like the county fair, Cracker Day, rodeos, and community outreach. This also has a $10 million legislative appropriation. We're about to start clearing the land to start the construction of this or the design and construction of this. We're just waiting until the end of April when I think one of the events, it's the fair, I believe it's, it's going to be ending in April. So May is the earliest that we can start working on the site prep. But basically, the grant was awarded to the county in December of 2024. We, in January, created the scope of work for procurement. And RFP has been issued for the design bill of this project. And then in May, right after that April timeline, in May, we can start demoing the 4-H barns, the 4-H barn and the, what they call the cowboy bathroom that exists in that area. And then we're going to be, our plan is to award a project design bill contract in May of 2025 and begin construction in October with a deadline of completing this project for, by July 2026.
Jorge, could you show me, please? I know it's not real clear, but
Yeah.
The photo up above on the top, no, I know that's Cattlemen's Hall.
Right.
The one above it. Where is the 4-H barn and bathroom? Is that though, those two buildings, one's long and one's short, right across from Cattlemen's?
Yeah, you see where the top picture is? There's a little triangle lake. And then there's a little, to the north, it's a little square. That's the barn.
Okay.
And then towards the east of that barn, that's big space with the little
That's Cattlemen's?
Yeah.
Sorry. Sorry for cross-talking.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
Okay, so does that, the big barn stay, which is now Cattlemen's?
Yeah, Cattlemen's
Or the two, the two small barns go?
Yeah, the, the small barn that Chair Dan's pointing out is going to be, it's going to be removed and the bathroom, because that's where this new building is going to be located.
Okay.
Okay? And then, once this is constructed, the Cattlemen's Hall will be deconstructed. The site will be elevated and then reconstructed again. So the Cattlemen's, Cattlemen's Hall will be in the same location. But due to flooding, we have to take it apart, elevate it, bring it back together. But we didn't want to do that until this new building was completed so they have some place to do some of their activities.
And then we're, we're demoing the 4-H, but we're going back with a new 4-H barn.
That is correct, yeah, Commissioner. So we're also working on a project to put a 4-H barn. We're working with the school district because there is some space where they have their barns for the FFA, the Future Farmers of America. So we're working with David Freeman and part of his staff to see if we can build it there. If not, we'll have to find a location. But we will be, we will be building another 4-H barn for, for those folks.
And have we gotten this project, baked into it, hardtopping any portion of the parking lot yet? I know that was when we initially had the vision of all this. There was a discussion about hardtopping because of how much maintenance has to be done because of flooding of the parking lot.
Yeah, we haven't completed those conversations about hardtopping. I think that we might have some requirement to keep it in gravel for water to go through. But it's, we haven't completed the conversation. It's still open.
We need to, I think, maybe at least look at that, just particularly the entrance. Getting out into there and it seems like every event I attend, someone's bottom out.
You didn't like having the water run into your shoes.
A lot of good boots get ruined out there.
And just, just for clarification, that, all that land is owned by the state?
That is correct, Commissioner, yeah. That's about 100 acres, I believe. Yeah.
I would say as a minimum, you have some hardscape with the ADA accessibility issues and whatnot. But yeah, especially at those entrance points where it does get worn out would be a nice apron.
Yeah, it seems like just the entrance point in ADA needs to be looked at, at least.
Yeah, we'll look into it.
Yeah.
Thank you. Project number seven is a Bull Creek Campground. So this project consists of a design and construction of a approximately 3,800-square-foot building. It's a restaurant, restaurant facility with a screen-in porch and some repairs that will be done to the seawall. We'll also be installing some floating docks and relocating the septic drain field. Since now, the board approved the purchase of the land that the McCraney, we call the McCraney a parcel. So the drain field will be moved and this would allow for this project to complete this section of the project. So the benefit of this project is that, the benefit of this project is it will provide some improvements to a facility that was damaged by hurricane. We received, I think, I believe it was $1.2 million from the recovery fund for hurricane. There's some general fund that was put in place and there's some impact, park impact fees will be used for this project. We'll be elevating the site with fill material and reduce the risk of future flooding. A restaurant at the campground will enhance the guest experience by providing convenient dining options and attracting more visitors. It offers campground, a hassle-free alternative to cooking, foster social engagement, and adds a unique amenity to the sets of campground, the campground apart. So basically, this, we've been working with a, a vendor that has been selected to manage the facility for, for the Bull Creek Campground. So basically, we evaluated proposals. We met with the folks that got selected. We've worked on the design of the, when we, I say we, as General Services, Mike Dixon, worked with the folks on the design of the layout and legal provided a draft for the lease. In February, the site work began and the kitchen bid went out. We're planning the design and the design as we speak. And the construction is expected to start in April, May of 2025 with completion of the construction and grant closeout of March 2026.
Jorge, can you refresh my memory? What's, where exactly, is this going to be right where the old one was?
Exactly where the old one was. Yes, yeah, that's been demolished, it's completely cleared. And that will be lifted, the fill will be put in place to lift that location.
There's fill out there now. Is that all we're going to need?
I believe the finished floor will be 7.5 or 8. Is that, I know that Commissioner Pennington asked about that a while back. And I believe is, the finished floor will be 8.
Eight feet?
Eight feet.
Eight feet, yeah.
And is the vendor you selected public record, public knowledge?
This is, let me see what we have here for the vendor.
I don't remember that coming up.
Yeah, this came back last year.
Not yet, not the vendor.
We had advertised it and we were in the middle of lease negotiations. So we haven't brought the formal lease and approval back to the board. We're still working through that.
Did you only get one?
No, we had several. So we started it in June and July and we didn't really receive many. So that first one was canceled. And then in between the June and July and reposting it in August and September, we actually met with four, I think it was three or four different people. And we met with them one-on-one to kind of outline what we were doing. So when we put it out, again, that August, September timeframe, we actually had, I think, two or three submittals, two, I believe.
Two, yeah.
And you're relying on them for the kitchen layout?
They have
Or are you doing the layout?
Well, it's a container kitchen. So we were just working with them to kind of make sure that the layout, it kind of comes standard, but they had wanted maybe some, a different equipment or things moved around. So we worked with them to design what that kitchen layout would look like based on
And they have expertise in this? You feel comfortable with?
It's pretty standard when you look at the design to begin with, but they do have experience with working in restaurants and things like that, so.
Can you explain what a, a, a container layout is?
So we, we had brought this project back last year. I think it started maybe April timeframe when we were made aware of the hurricane recovery. So what we were looking at going back and doing is, it's kind of looks like a Conex box. They're used in outdoor or indoor applications. So essentially, it's like a Conex box that is completely built out like a kitchen. So all the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, AC, all of that itself contained. That would be placed inside the building. It would be built out that you're not going to recognize it as a Conex box, but it's kind of a self-contained unit, comes with all the kitchen equipment, so.
So like sinks, refrigerators, and all that?
Walk-in coolers.
So it's a preset kitchen?
Right.
Correct. That you just put in an area?
Correct.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, so for that project, we received $1.2 million from the hurricane recovery. The county signed $290,000 from general fund and there's $60,000 from impact fees for a total of $1.5 million for that.
I have a question. Do, do we need the general fund money for this project?
We, we're going to see. We might not need it. It depends.
Or you may need it over at the McCraney land.
Right, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, because, yeah.
If I, if I could, not everything that we're doing out there was damaged by the hurricane. So yes, we will need some of the
Okay.
Funding from general fund and impact fees.
The next project, Project Eight, is a commerce parkway, which is a connection road that will connect State Road 100 to US-1. The project consists of a, of two, of a 1.7-mile road, two lanes. And it would include a five-foot sidewalk, stormwater management system, pond swales and drainage structure. The benefit of this project is that it will provide connection between the two state roads, between the State Road and US-1, another state road, creating a secondary access without having to go through downtown Bonnell to create that additional traffic. It would also open the area up for future development. This is a completed design and it's at 80% completion. This is managed by Richard Zion from the Engineering Department. The project total cost is $14.4 million. We are in, like I said, 80% completion, construction. And the project is expected to be completed in July 2025. Right in Wendy's, it would begin, that's the connection. And it goes down all the way past the Sheriff's Operations Center, all the way to US-1. Right.
That's the road behind the sheriff's office that you see them plowing through now.
That's it.
It's going to go behind, to the side of it.
To US-1.
Come out where the Dollar General area is down on US-1.
So it's going to bypass the city, interior of the city and go through behind the city, more or less, or through the city in the back end? Okay. Got it?
Where does it come out on US-1?
South of the, south of Bonnell, south of the Dollar General. So you'll, if you drive that way, you'll see the connection already. And the median has already had a D cell lane, turn lanes are
That's already paved. That's already paved down there. Yeah.
So this, this developmental, developmentable land that we're looking at, that's a big green section? Is that belong to the county Bonnell or a combination of?
This is all within the city limits of the city Bonnell. But we are managing the project. The Engineering Department is managing the project.
Property is privately owned, but the property owner donated the right-of-way to construct the road.
Yeah, so the FDOT provided out of the, the $14 million, $6.8 million came from FDOT, $4.5 million came from the City of Bonnell, and $3.1 million came from the Flagler County Impact, Transportation Impact Fees.
And this has been, early stages of this, at least fifteen years old.
Wow, I remember. When will that be completed, Jorge?
July of 2025.
So this July, coming in, okay.
So project number nine is the Old Haw Creek Road, which is connecting, this road will be connecting State Road, State Road 11 to County Road 304. This is a four point five, four point nine mile roadway project. It includes some resurfacing and it includes some new pavement to make this connection. It also will provide some additional drainage, signage and striping and bridge, bridge improvements. Some of the project benefits are, it will provide improvement for transportation, mobility and accessibility for residents, visitors and emergency responses. The project will decrease the maintenance requirements in need for frequent, frequent repair, road repairs, which also helps control dust, erosion and runoff compared to unpaved. So this will be a complete paved road, almost five, five miles. The design is complete and the construction of this road is seventy-five percent complete and also expected to be completed by July of 2025.
Just a quick, a, a, an ask, there was a gentleman that had a culvert issue on this, he got skipped. It had some permitting problems, if, maybe somebody can circle back and get me an update?
Okay.
I'd asked a couple of weeks ago, and there wasn't an initial update, but I think he had some issues with the city of Benel's permitting and, and that, so he got skipped, his culvert got skipped. Dropping him in the culvert.
Was it the person that actually had the house built after the design of this? Okay.
Yeah, so he, he's been missed.
Okay.
He wasn't there at the beginning.
He wasn't on the project.
Okay.
And the, the drainage project that's still hanging out, is this catastrophic if we don't get the money for the drainage project? Is that gonna really hurt this, the ability of this project?
This project is completely funded.
Well, but we have an additional drainage problem that we're trying to fix. And that's gonna affect this road, I was just wondering what the, what the impact is on this road if we can't get that money. Just to.
I'll have to look into that.
I don't know that the drainage impacts the road, but the drainage issue affects, affects the property.
The property, yeah.
On the east side of Haw Creek where it's backing up, so this should help.
This should help.
But it, it shouldn't damage, it's not like it's a problem that will, I don't see it damaging the road.
Okay, just the land.
But it, it will help the flooding issues.
Okay.
That are for the other lower lying areas on the east side of Haw Creek.
So. Later date.
Project number ten is the Regional Trails and Conservation Center. This is located at east of Oakings Road on the south side of the State Road 100, just west of the pedestrian bridge when you go towards Flagler Beach. This project is a, for a building of about ten thousand square feet. And it will serve as the county's, it will, it will, the facility to serve the county and the region with ecotourism opportunities and house the Flagler County Tourism Development Office. Some of the benefits of this project include the project will provide a boost to tourism and economic growth by attracting outdoors and tourist, ecotourism, ecotourism and facilities increasing visitor spending in local businesses. It will enhance conservation awareness by educating residents and visitors about local ecotourism, wildlife and conservation efforts. So this project, there was some conceptual drawings that Amy has been working on with staff all the way back to April of 2023. There was legislative, legislative appropriation, project submittal in December of 23. The TDC Board approved the project construction back in July of 2024. And an RFQ, RFQ for a design-build project was put out for, in December of 2024. We are expecting to start construction in August of 2025 and with the expectation completion date of spring of 2027. There's still some funding that Amy and staff are looking for, there's a legislative appropriation that went for this year's cycle of funding requests. If that is not considered or approved, then Amy's department will have some funding to cover some of that, some of the gap, but also will potentially need to get a loan to complete the project. That is my understanding.
I, I thought we were advertising that we had ten million on this. That we had ten million dollars.
That's all, the only number I've ever seen is ten million.
Yeah, I'll, I'll share the numbers here.
It should be on that graph.
Fifteen.
If I could, the board has only approved one point six million and that's for the planning. We've discussed in the past that Amy, I believe in her reserves, had up to ten million sitting out there. When it went in front of the TDC Board back in July of last year, TDC Board, I believe, I don't remember how many are on the board, but all but two approved the use of those reserves that are sitting out there. In talking to Hamid, who actually oversees this project, it's anticipated that it's probably closer to the fourteen point five. So you have ten million, I think that sits in her reserves now. You've got the one point six that had already been allocated, but there is that gap, that's why we're asking for that legislative appropriation to fill that gap. I just wanted to clarify that.
What changed?
So if we don't fill the gap, what do we do?
Well, you could do a number of things, you could either, I think the project's only ten thousand square feet, it's not that large, so I don't know that you'd be able to really scale it back to get what you want. There is the potential that maybe you could go out for debt and, you know, seek a loan and then just use the half cent to pay the debt service on that.
What changed it from that beautiful presentation that she presented to us was ten million? What changes it to fifteen million within thirty or sixty days?
I don't know when she last did it, this project actually started a couple of years ago.
Yeah, sixty days ago, that was presented to us, it showed us how it was gonna be laid out, showed us all the rooms and everything. I don't understand how it went one and a half times its cost in sixty days, or about sixty to ninety days, let's say.
The only thing I can refer back to is the engineers that are actually working the project. I don't know if Amy's was a ballpark, it could have been that that's what the facility would cost. You're gonna have site improvements that are gonna be needed, you're gonna have a decal lane, you're gonna have to have ample parking for buses and stuff like that. I know when the initial discussion about this started, which was at least two or three years ago, we were estimating it to be ten. So I don't know if it's the same information because we don't have a hard number and won't have a hard number until we actually bid it out for construction.
Maybe that, we maybe, maybe we'll have to modify it to what it fits into that number. I don't, I don't understand where I'm worried about bus parking when I don't even have a building. You know, I have a bridge right now and a little concrete. That's what we have, that's what we've already spent. I thought it was the total project, so ten, ten, ten thou, ten million for the building was what I was understood for the longest of times. To see it here now, I'm, I'm just a little taken aback by the number. It seems like it's, keeps going bigger and bigger and bigger instead of when we need less and less and less in our spending, so thank you.
You have a question?
I don't, I, I just, so when we, what happened? So you have a new ask, basically, so the ask last year that was vetoed went again in front of that veto board and wasn't reconsidered, right?
Right.
Okay, so now we have this new ask, it's three million.
Right.
And it's predicated on the, our match is that ten million.
That's correct.
That's what we're telling them, right? So if we get the three million, then we, from the government or from the state, we've committed because they're using a match out of the TDC of ten million. And then now we're looking at possibly having a bond.
Yeah, the, the delta there, yeah.
On, yeah, on a sales tax that seems to have a lot of projects eyeing it for bonding.
Wouldn't it be out of sales tax, it would be out of the TDC revenue?
You would bond on the TDC.
Take out a loan that could be backed by the general fund, but you pledge the TDC as the payment without having to bond it.
Yeah.
I think.
Go ahead, sir.
I think the only thing that's confusing would be clarifying if, if the little dial, the funding graph actually showed the, the ten million commitment and then the ask. Cause then, then, then you have like a million and a half that's in the gap.
Yeah.
So, you know, the ten million that's in reserves would, would push the, would push the bar up.
Right.
We, we could certainly change that, the reason why we didn't display it like that is because formal board approval has not been given to take the ten million out of TDC.
Yeah, but we're asking for the appropriation, so, I mean, that discussion's occurring. This should reflect the discussion that we're having with the legislators.
If you want, what we could do is show it as tourism, but it's sitting in reserves, it hasn't been allocated by the board, which is why it doesn't show the funding, but I think we can accomplish the same thing, just call the one the tourism, the other one's tourism reserves, it would have to be moved by board action.
Right, but the TDC did push that forward, so the commitment's there.
TDC Board did, but the Board of County Commission had not.
Right, but we're making a, you know, a public discussion with the legislators on that commitment. I, I just think the bar should reflect the, the plan that we have in place.
We can certainly change that.
Yeah.
I, I agree with the chairman.
That would answer Pam's question about what the actual delta is of the little reserve, which could be value engineering, could be lots of other things in addition to that, for that extra ask. Commissioner Hanson, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just gonna support what you said, we, we're on, on the record with briefing the, our legislators that, that we have ten million dollars. We've told them that, we got that ten million, so anything we, anything we go public with should show that, that we have that ten million dollars.
Yeah, I think the only thing is that it hasn't been formally approved by the board, but we can actually display this in a way that it can accomplish what you're asking.
And I'm just gonna say it, cause, but I'm a little worried about the ten million not being formally approved by the board while we go to ask for this three, because it's been done by the TDC and you're in the midst of trying to decipher how you fund a beach. And I think that there's a, a hard, and apologies to tourism, but there's a hard thought there that maybe the ten million that we're pledging towards this building maybe should have been pledged towards the beach issue rather than passing new taxes. So, you know, I think that's just a decision, I, I get a little nervous because we're going up there. We haven't really had a formal discussion about the ten million. We're going up for an ask of three, they're gonna expect us to commit the ten after we get their three, you know.
Yeah, and we can, there's a couple steps into this process, we can modify this graph to reflects, reflect the, the reserves and the tourism funds that have been committed. There's also that this project has been approved through the both strategic plans, the TDC strategic plan and also the County Board of County Commissioners strategic plan. So there is this commitment out there that was made publicly that this is the, one of the projects that we wanna work on. Now, the funding is been approved or recommended to be approved by the TDC, that piece has been done. That's a big step in the process, now it just has to come to the Board of County Commissioners. As Commissioner Hanson said, it's something that we brief our state representative that we had that money. We believe that we have support to move it forward, we just need to bring it in, have the board make that decision to complete that step. But in this presentation process, we can actually update it to reflect those reserve dollars that are allocated for this project.
Yes?
So, one of the reasons I wanted an update on projects is because you get a lot of timelines that are finishing in twenty twenty-six.
Right.
And twenty twenty-five, and I congratulate you on that. When the airport company came to us on the terminal building, there was a decision or a comment, I'm sorry, a comment made that, well, you know with the tariffs, which set up my antenna very, very quickly, that I don't want people coming before us with a tariff cost adjustment on all these projects. So I did talk to Heidi, I, I need to feel comfortable that our contracts are tight and that our budgets for these projects are being met. Because as we move into the next fiscal year, or at least the budgeting for the next fiscal year, we're not gonna have a whole lot of leeway. And we get to quarter, the fourth quarter of this project, we're almost to the end and we need to find money. And I've seen a lot of resolutions for changing the budget, they're in the positive, which we're getting grants and we're doing positive things. But I just don't wanna see, you know, six months from now, seven months from now, that I'm needing to pull money from allocated reserve or, I'm just, I'm just scared. I mean, there's just a whole lot of moving parts here. And that's hence my request for an update, and this is only a portion, this is only ten projects, right?
That is correct.
I have another matrix in front of me with multiple projects on it called capital improvement budget and that we're gonna talk about a little bit later that looks like this. So, we, I, I, am I clear?
Yes.
I just need to know that we're protected, that if a vendor comes to us or a contractor comes to us and says, hey, look, we just had a price increase, are they protecting themselves, do we have enough contingency money in all these projects? That we're not coming back looking for more money later. And on this particular TDC one, obviously we need to get a, an answer or come together as a board, but money's gonna be tight next year and probably a couple of years after that as well. So I'm glad we get all this vertical stuff going on, but we, we gotta be watching it. That, that was my gist for trying to get an update, thank you.
Yes, so all the projects have a contingency percentage allocated to them. Projects that are in progress right now, they have a contract, that's a binding contract. They, and we have a C Mar and they're gonna build this based on those, those numbers. Now, the ones that we don't have a contract in place or we have a C Mar in place may be impacted by those tariffs that you're talking about. So that's when the fixed price will come in, once that process goes in. But we, the ones that are in progress, they have a, it's a binding contract, they have to provide it within those guidelines.
I, I think, right now, this board should decide if this project should go over the money that they have between the, if you get the legislative and what they've dedicated out of the TDC, because you know, we could be looking at a different scenario as this, you know, next year. And I don't know that we wanna allow anyone to commit to, to getting loans or anything of that nature. So I, I don't know if you really wanna, so that, give some feedback as to whether or not they should try to keep within the parameters of the ten million or thirteen million or whatever we're gonna come up with here and not to go over.
One thing we can do is just to make the board feel more comfortable is wait until this legislative process goes into place and then we can bring it back for a conversation.
I just don't wanna take money, you know, and not do a, you know, and have to give back money to the state. Or, or push for this project when we could push for, you know, cause they're not gonna do every project.
Is that why we're, we're looking at it now because it didn't get approved last year, is that why?
It, it got vetoed, was it five million?
Yeah, five million.
Yeah, it got vetoed by the governor's office, it went to the veto board that they set up this year. They chose not to renew it because they would need two-thirds of the vote out of the senate on a project, so they didn't renew it. So now we have a separate ask for three million and we're showing them a commitment of the ten. The board has not approved the ten million, only the TDC Board has approved the ten million. So would still come in front of the board to prove that ten million dollars were out of the reserves from the TDC to do the project. So.
So the TDC Board did that in July of twenty-four? So the months that have passed is, is because we're waiting for more, whether it be an appropriation or we come up with it?
Right, we, we're waiting for that appropriation, we're expecting to, you know, be able to get it, they were considering like Commissioner Pennington said. Right, we, we're waiting for that appropriation. We're expecting to, you know, be able to get it. They're considering, like Commissioner Pennington said, they're considering projects that have some skin in the game. Ours will have a $10 million funding.
But we're putting the whole skin in the game, like 10 million.
10 million that, yeah. I mean, I'm not, you know.
TDC reserves.
Yeah, right, TDC reserves.
I have a, I have a very off-the-wall question, if I can.
Yep.
We're doing beach re-nourishment, right? That's a, been, a paramount situation of dire needs, so I've been made to understand. So we're gonna do 10 million on a property that's going to support the beach visitation, because that's where all our customers come from. Our, that's, I've been hearing this over and over about our, that's our driver, more or less, our economic driver.
It's an economic engine.
For tourism.
Right.
So rather than put the money into the beach to protect it, we're gonna build a building and spend 15 million on that and ask the taxpayers to pay for the beach. But why are we putting the cart before the horse in my head?
Well, I would say that there's probably room for Amy to come do a more clarifying presentation, because if you're sitting through TDC, one of the primary objectives is not just completely relying on the beach for tourism. One Flagler Beach has asked that we look at alternatives, which we've done through, um, highlighting the different beach access points in the unincorporated part of the county. Um, so ecotourism is the other main draw that we can, um, highlight and, and expand the opportunities for people so that they're not all just coming to the county for the beach. So one of the main, one of the main pushes from the Tourism Council is, is working on alternates, just not, so it's not just the beach. So, you know, their perspective is we've gotta put money in all these different baskets in order to expand opportunities. And, uh, you know, we went through a whole process with the Northeast Florida Regional Council on trails and tourism, ecotourism, um, and, you know, looked at all the facts and figures that supported expansion of ecotourism and trails. And, and that was a big part of, um, aligning this facility with the, um, with the pedestrian access. So, so that's, that's the part, that's the rationale behind, you know.
I'm just questioning the, the, um, the timeframe, since we're so desperately needing the beach to survive, which is the number one tourism. This is an addition too. So, we're begging for funds on one and supplying fi, another 5 million on another. It's just doesn't, that's not math to me in, in, in the priority list, since the beach is what we've been talking about every month, every ship workshop, every, ever since I've been sitting here. Uh, that's four months of discussion, and, and we're trying to find resolutions, and yet it appears like it's right here in front of me. I, I just, that's just my vision of it. I may be totally wrong, but I just see it that way.
Well, I don't think we can, Heidi, could you correct me? I don't think we can pledge that much to beach restoration. Aren't we limited by the resolution from the state on how much we can pledge?
You have limitations on how you can use the TDC funding, and so I'd probably need legal to weigh in, but I don't know that you could use all of it for beach re-nourishment. And even if you had the money in TDC and you have it sitting there, it's gonna be a one and done. You have that commitment every year to come up with 12 million, so you do need a long-term funding strategy to cover that. Um, you know, and I think when Amy has given the presentation before, um, it's always been about creating assets in the community that draw tourists here so that we don't put all of our eggs in one basket.
I'm not against the tourism, uh, story there. I, I think it's a beautiful project. It's just, it's one and a half times what I was under the impression it was gonna be. So that's just brought to me here. Uh, and I understand we, it's a great, it would be a great addition for our community, no question, as long as we had the drivers to bring the people there. That's not an issue.
To, to further clarify what just Heidi mentioned here, um, the 10 million is coming from, uh, one of the funds is the 110, which is the promo, I believe that's part of the promotion, um, dollars that Amy collects. So it's not from the 111 that we've been talking about for the beach re-nourishment. It's five cents of 111, the 109, which is capital projects, and 110 and the others are, uh, the ones that sustain the tourism efforts and promotion and marketing. So, some of the money has come from 110, not 111, and then some of the money came from 109. So that's what Heidi was mentioning, that the funds need to be used according to some, you know, some, real kicker, yeah.
And, and I, I guess some extra clarification is, since we've started this process with legislative, identifying our legislative priorities, this, this amount has been consistent. So the 10 plus 3 has been consistent. It's, there's, the, the, well, no, but it's been there. It's, that's the whole discussion that we had was about the match and the need for the additional 3 million. That, that's been consistent as far as I can remember. Um, so what we're looking at is a gap of 1 and 1/2 million, which I think there's lots of different ways we can fill that gap, uh, whether it's through value engineering or some additional funding that TDC, um, has, um, through sponsorships, I don't know. There's, I, I think it's worthy of having an additional discussion, um, after legislative session is done and, and pull everybody back together on the project. But I, I would caution you with that, that it hasn't all of a suddenly expanded. As far as I know, it's been very consistent at the 10 plus 3.
I'm just using my memory, and that's why I'm asking the questions.
Okay.
May I, um, ask? So if I'm looking at this, not to put you on the spot.
Right, okay.
Please, don't take it that way.
No.
And if I gotta get the information next week, I'm fine.
Okay.
So there are currently four HVAC projects, or three, sorry.
Right.
You know which ones they are, various facilities, it says. So, do you, can you tell me? Are those done?
Uh, those, if there's for, they're for current year?
Yes.
I, I don't have a status of they're done or not.
Okay. You also have a Bing's Master Plan improvements. Is that done?
We have several projects that have carried over over the years. We weren't prepared to go over that list with an update today. Um, we do meet, I think it's quarterly with the CIP team. We were trying to come up with some new sheets I shared with you last week. So we're in the process of updating those new sheets to provide more information.
Okay.
If you want a status on every item that's on the CIP, we could certainly.
I just want to know that we're not going into the budget and the stuff isn't done. I guess what we would do is just carry it over to the following year, the funding, we carry it over to the next year.
That's correct. If we don't get to it.
If it was in this year's budget, then it should be needed and it should be done.
I don't disagree with you. Sometimes it's a matter of staffing and whether or not we have the resources to do it in-house versus contracting it out.
Okay.
So I think we could come back to you with a list. We've got, um, we were trying to highlight the active projects that we have currently right now. Um, we could spend more time even talking about the beach and things that we have coming up, uh, planned for the beach. Uh, we didn't incorporate in here projects that are less than a million dollars, which we have plenty of those.
Okay.
Um, it's, really depends on what level the board wants to get involved in all of these projects, because we have quite a few.
Yeah, the other thing we're working on that, um, the GIS team and the General Services team, which manages a lot of those 1 million dollar and below projects, is we're gonna be creating a dashboard similar to the one we have for the capital projects for the Engineering Department. So that way, um, we provide you a status of where these projects are, um, the funding that it has, similar to this update, but it'll be updated on a regular basis, and it'll have a map so you can actually hover and click and see where these projects are at. Okay. Okay, you're welcome.
Before we move on, um, the point was made, all right, and I had a little tally here that we've got four projects that'll be completed November 26. One, um, the, the first one will be November of '25, and then in '26, uh, we've got July, March, July, and four in November. So, yeah, being managed by engineering?
The majority are managed by engineering.
Okay, so do we, are we staffed in engineering? Do we still have open positions or?
No, we are fully staffed now.
Okay.
We just hired, uh, Amy just hired two, a program manager, engineering program manager, and, uh, uh, when Weldon left as a project manager, that position has been filled, uh, as of last month as well.
Okay.
So we're fully staffed now.
Okay, just want to make sure that we have the staff to make sure. We didn't have any open positions that were, uh, where we fall behind in being able to manage them.
Yeah, thank you for asking, yeah.
Okay, any other questions on this part? This is the capital project update. The sheet's okay? The format, when they come back?
Yeah.
I think the, as we move forward, uh, with the next set of, um, right, we kinda need a timeline of where if anything is adjusted, so we can keep an eye on, on the product, on the progress.
Yeah, and in terms of funding, Heidi, uh, we're gonna spreadsheet where we can actually have by fiscal year, the original budget, budget amendments, revised budget, actual expenditures and encumbrances, and then we have the project budget balance. So that's something we can provide to you as well.
Is it possible at some point, I'm not pushing for it now or anything, but as we bring these buildings online, can we get a, a idea of what it will cost to operate the building and new FTE that we anticipate putting into the budget?
Very good question. I think that one of the things that, um, the, the fire stations will not, it's just the current staff. There is a presentation that Fire Chief will be providing you in terms of forecasting, uh, facilities, needs, and also, um, equipment and personnel. Um, right now, just to give you a high-level, uh, data point here, when the fire station, when the Rescue 25 was put in place in production here at Station 25 in the city of Palm Coast, we had to staff it with nine FTEs. This is an additional rescue with the current staff. So we're running those, um, FTEs based on, um, overtime. So, um, I know that we've been talking about bringing that information to the board so you can see some of the gaps we have in staffing. Um, for those of you that might not be aware, all the rescues or the ambulances that run in the county are, are funded by the board and staffed by the Fire Department. So, as we add more, so one of the reasons that we needed to add that one there is because there was very high demand in two of the fire stations, especially in the core of the city of Palm Coast. By adding this additional fire rescue, it alleviate the, the workload for the fire, firemen and women that work in these stations. So from that perspective, that's one issue. Now the library will need additional staff, the Nexus Center.
Yeah.
Um, the, uh.
Not, not just that, but like, like, and this is my thought, is under the project, a grid.
Right.
It gives you an estimated FTE and cost, estimated insurance, because we're coming into new buildings that will need new insurance.
Right.
Maintenance, utility, costs.
Facilities, folks, yeah.
Just so that we're mindful that we're gonna have that coming into our budget, because I'm looking at, I, I mean, we may have additional homestead exemption
Coming over, yeah.
Coming open. The governor, it looks like they're proposing getting rid of the lieutenant governor role and adding a Doge that will come to the county, so it'll be Doge, um, which, you know, sort of, I look, you know.
So.
So, you have all these unknown variables while we're adding new capital projects. As, and I call us a fiscally constrained county because 90% is on a resident. And I, to be honest, I stood out west and was told they couldn't afford street signs the other day. Luckily, I'm getting them, but, I mean, we're, we're really tight here, you know? So, um, and you've got the beach issue, which I don't disagree is a big issue that we need to solve somehow. And so you look at all these headwinds we're facing, and we haven't even talked about the stormwater plan out west, so, other than we know we have one. So, look at all these things, and the tourism building is a nice to have, and it makes so total sense when you talk about it, but, you know, it's like, can we, can we endure this if we hit tariffs, recession, a state Doge, just more homestead, you know, it's like the perfect storm.
Yeah, more constraints from the, from the revenue side.
Or Flywood County. So I just want to be really mindful, like, when we're looking at these, these projects, um, what's, what's looked like for us as they come online, because they're almost all coming online in the same budget year.
Yeah, so some of these projects, like, for example, the fire station, I shared some information there.
Well, that's the other thing, equipment. Are we looking at new equipment? New ambulances needed, anything like that?
Equipment side, I think we, the board has been so very supportive, and there's been some approval of new equipment, fire trucks, uh, rescues. So that is getting to a point that we're very close to where we need to be. So, basically, uh, the equipment we have, we have the equipment, mostly the equipment, like trucks and fire, and rescues that are gonna be
We just know that.
For these completed stations.
We just know from just Old Courthouse, we know that, you know, the insurance costs are outrageous, just everything in general. Just getting an idea so that we're mindful of it, you know.
Yeah, we can bring back those numbers.
Numbers start going flat or even down in the housing and.
Yeah, we can bring back those numbers. We can definitely do that. But I just wanted to give you like a quick, high-level flyover of this. The SMA building will be completely handed over to SMA, so there's no expenditure for the county in terms of maintenance or staffing. That's completely handed over. Um, the Nexus building will require some staff, because the current facility that we had, which is a small library, is not gonna be sufficient for this larger facility. So there'll be some staff addition, plus we need to consider the capacity of our facilities, folks, because now we're adding more square footage. The airport, I'm assuming that the staff is very close to where it needs to be. Um, the expenditures in terms of, uh, you know, custodial will be a little bit higher, as well as, as well as power and, uh, utilities itself. Um, number six, which is the multi-purpose emergency shelter, that building probably is not gonna require a lot of work from our side. It's an open facility, and, um, just from the faci, from the facility side, the general service staff to clean it, if that's one of the things they do, will be, uh, some staffing there. The Bolt Creek, um, that's gonna be completely managed by the restaurant company that has it. The roads project, this road is, uh, once constructed, it'll be good for the next 15 to 20 years. Uh, as well as Haw Creek, Old Haw Creek Road would actually bring the cost down, because right now is just dirt road, and there's multiple hours of labor and, uh, materials that have been used today to maintain that road. So that would probably be a savings. Uh, the ecotourism, I'm not sure if there's gonna be some additional staffing there, and that's it. So, from that perspective, it seems like from a staffing, the library will requiring a few staff members there. The big, bigger impact is on the square footage of maintenance from the facility side. And the board added some additional staffing to accommodate the gap that we currently have, uh, over a million square foot of facilities that we have to maintain, and there's only, uh, a small amount of, of FTEs that we have. So, that has, will be increasing a little bit, but with these new buildings, there'll be some costs, as you mentioned, insurance, uh, utility, utilities, and, uh, folks to maintain it.
Yeah, I think, looking at this, we're going to have, the Nexus Center will be affecting this current budget we're working on. The others are, um, Bolt Creek, which should, um, that's March 26th, which will be in this budget.
And there's some revenues that would be generated once that project is completed from the campsites.
Right.
So that should help offset a little bit of that cost as well.
And then the other one, I think, was a road project, um, but the Benel project. So of the two, you know, this, you should see, right, we should see some things built into the budget for Bolt Creek and for Nexus. And then next year, we've got, um, the shelter terminal at the airport, which should be covered by the airport operations.
Right.
And then the fire stations that are coming onboard. So, uh, the point being, when we get, you know, we will be looking for some of those costs into this budget, and then next year, um, when we do the budget for the fire stations and, um, and a couple of the others. Luckily, some of them are, like you said, are, some of these are road projects, which
Right.
Should be saving us some money.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking about getting, uh, help, right? Working, working, people working in the, is there any outreach to volunteers to assist us in some of the growth of these projects in any way?
The county does use volunteers for some of the tasks that we, and they save us, save us actually, save the county and the taxpayers a lot of money. But some of these function is actually maintenance, cleaning buildings, and, um, and I know that the library also uses volunteers, uh, there. But there's some staff, like certified staff that needs to be in place.
Mm-hmm. I just didn't know if there was any outreach for it, uh, ahead of time, or are we waiting? I just didn't know if there was any outreach for it ahead of time, or we wait until we open and then say, come, come help us. I just didn't know how that worked, so that's what I was wondering.
Well, at the Emergency Operations Center, we have volunteers that help us there.
Yeah.
And I know there'll probably be volunteers, you know, Eco Discovery helping TDC out, so they're incorporated in lots of areas, I would assume, and the library has has great volunteers.
Yeah, we have also at the extension office, they came here not so long ago, the ladies that work and the, yeah.
Flagler Volunteer, Flagler Volunteer Services is a great partner for us.
That is correct. Yeah, thank you.
All right, any other questions? We'll move on. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, on annexation, I'm going to come up and I'm going to have my sidekick, Sean, join us.
Absolutely.
While we talk about this very interesting and challenging topic.
He's going to come up to the mic.
We don't have any PowerPoint or anything, and the way we're going to
The A-Team.
Al Hadid for the county attorney. So Sean and I are up here together, and we're going to split our presentation to you. I thought it'd be very helpful to go over our history, Flagler County's history with annexation to date. There has been some sentiment that we've never done anything aggressive or things to protect ourselves from a misuse of annexation. But there's been a lot of history there. So I want to take you through that and make it real as to the kinds of things that happen and why they happened. Because you can't figure out where you're going until you know where you've been, okay? So I'm going to start with the incorporation of the city of Palm Coast in 2000. And of course, they were looking to establish their city, they wanted more taxing capability. They eventually acquired the utility, remember that? That was a big thing, a big milestone for the city. And now they had a tool to actualize annexation. You want water and sewer, you're going to need to annex, you all know that. So it created a lot of tension right away. And I don't know if the suit was filed in 2004, but somewhere in the span of 2004 to early or mid 2007 was extensive litigation among Flagler Beach, the city, obviously the county. I don't think Benel was actually a formal party to that litigation. Developers were involved in that litigation, and you've probably heard the rubric, the end result, the Water War settlement. And that's what it was, because it was literally dividing up territory. It identified places where city utilities could be provided, but that they could not annex. There are prohibition annexation zones in the Water War settlement. So how did that manifest itself? Well, now the settlement came in 2007, and Palm Coast was, I'll tell you two real true stories about the implementation. The other ones are fanciful, no, I'm just joking. So they were trying to backdoor annexation into the hammock. I don't know that you all realize that. New houses were coming in, people needed water, city water. So they would require them to sign a quote voluntary annexation agreement, which they could implement at any time in the future. And they were doing that in, pressing it quite substantially. The county took note of that, and actually, I was very much involved in that case, to stop that activity. Because in the Water War settlement, there is a very large map, which laid out all these areas, it's color coded. If you hear people talking about that, and they show you a black and white, that has absolutely no relevance. It's in color. It's color coded with specificity done by engineers, all right? So in the dispute with the hammock, we stumbled across, why we were arguing so bitterly was because the city had their map, but it was not the map that was adopted by the court. The court actually said, this is the map we're going to adopt. They were using the wrong map. I don't know if they're still using it, I've tried to see what they're using. I'm hoping they're using the correct one. This might be something that I'm, in light of this interest, definitely pursue to make sure they're using the right one. So let me give you a more real example. Palm Coast Plantation. Palm Coast Plantation is in the water utility service area of the city of Palm Coast. Why isn't it annexed? Because there was a lawsuit. What was the basis of the lawsuit? You're not allowed to annex us because of the Water War settlement. It's a prohibited area, right? So that's why Palm Coast Plantation is not incorporated. This was an attempt, the Water War settlement, was an attempt to really look long range about the interests of each of the governmental entities, and where they can be and where they can't be. It was designed really to have the ability to arbitrate and avoid future arguments about annexation. Then we get to airport issues, airport issues. So we had a very significant fight with the city of Palm Coast, which resulted in a 2015 agreement that flowed from the Water War settlement, predicated on the Water War settlement, which has many provisions that governs the annexation around the airport, and by the way, no annexation of any of the airport or of additional lands that were added to the airport. So, and that was a very comprehensive agreement with a lot of moving parts, and we still use it. Airport Commons, you all know where that project is, you know, right there at, right across from the Wawa, that was an outgrowth from the Water War settlement and the 2015 interlocal to allow that project to go forward. So those are by separate interlocal agreement with the city of Palm Coast. Do we need to relook at this? Probably. We know, we've heard that. There are consequences from annexation. If the, if the underlying purpose of the annexation is so that the property owner can intensify their development, that has, because the city would be more willing to provide an intensification of entitlements, then that has a repercussion to us. What? How much? We don't know. We have to be able to evaluate that and deal with it. So we also had going on around the same time, and not so much governed by the Water War settlement, but an outgrowth of the competition between Palm Coast and rural landowners, who feared Palm Coast incorporating them, driving up their costs, drumming down their entitlements, et cetera. So they began their own annexation moves, the city to guard against. They want to annex into Benel because that means Palm Coast can annex them. So, and plus, I think some of them thought too that Benel was more liberal in terms of development rights, the county would be stricter than Benel. So many opted to go, and that was their rationale. So large swaths of land, and then you started seeing little sections here and there, and then we had the very sizable annexation that just occurred there. So now, so the administration at the time, and I don't know
Al, Al, sorry.
Yes.
Right here. Can you name that relatively large one that just took place?
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't name the, it's, it was land owned by one of the timber companies, a very substantial number of housing units, the 5,000 housing unit
Farm mill?
Project? What do they call it? Is that what they call it? Haw Creek? Okay.
The one in Benel?
Benel?
Yeah, the one that was annexed.
The reserve or
Yeah, it's the reserve, and they call the reserve or something. Anyway. Yeah, maybe they haven't named it. But anyway, those are very impactful, because it'll be a center of development, and it may have a repercussion effect. So they were not looked at, and I don't know that you would want to look at them, but you see the protocol that we presented. Now I want to take you to more current Veranda Bay. Well, the Water Wars settlement dealt with the area that is, it wasn't called that, but the area of Veranda Bay. And the county had the authority to provide the water service there. That was their jurisdiction. Then matters changed. There was an effort by Palm Coast to try to annex, it wasn't allowed by the Water War settlement. The county entered into discussions with Flagler Beach, and under the Water War settlement, which allows for subsequent agreements, that's the point of it, yielded a subsequent agreement that Flagler Beach would now have that utility area, okay? And of course, you know, that is now pending, and we're dealing with that, I don't know. The, the place where annexation, where we should really pay attention, is when there's an annexation and the municipality, in order to accommodate what they've annexed, have to amend their comprehensive plan. That is where the rubber hits the road. And what we've done, what we've tried to do, Sean and I getting together and figuring out, how should we approach this in the future? We're at a stage where annexations have kind of run wild, and I don't mean that in a disparaging way, but their pace, their size, their impact are growing, not diminishing. And perhaps we need to wrap our arms around it and figure out how it can occur in a more accountable way, and in a way that best represents the interests of Flagler County citizens and eventually municipal citizens. So what I want to do is have Sean relate to you the approaches that we see and how we might be able to bring that accountability to the extent you desire. So I'll let Sean take over from here. And you've gotten a memo on that, by the way.
Sean Moylan, Deputy County Attorney. So the memo that we sent largely deals with the parameters, the rules that govern annexations, and it's sort of a rubric that we can look to, to evaluate proposals. But beyond that, the, something that was toward the end of the memo that I really want to highlight is the Joint Planning Committee. This is something that the, the new comprehensive plan that has been presented to you, particularly in the intergovernmental coordination element, it's calling for the creation of a joint planning committee with the county and the municipalities. Adam, our Growth Management Director, has begun those conversations already with his counterparts at the cities. Everyone recognizes that this is something that's needed, it's the right time, so that as opposed to the ad hoc type of plans and agreements that have come up that Al has just described to you, we would have something that's sort of established in place, has some basic rules of how information will flow and how comments can be transmitted between the jurisdictions. The hope there is that we have more coordinated planning going forward. Till now, usually we just get a statutory notice in the mail, something that's required. Oh, by the way, there's an annexation happening. And whether it was a single parcel or whether it was a huge new development, it was just this, it was, it was almost like an afterthought, and now is the time to up our game in that regard. The Joint Planning Committee, by the way, does not only handle annexations, they look at service boundary agreements, they evaluate the impact on the environment, on infrastructure. So when you have a proposed development along a jurisdictional boundary, there may not even be an annexation involved, but yet there needs to be coordination. It's very easy to say, I do want you to know that this will be laborious, there's going to be a lot of work involved, this won't happen overnight. If we do reach a point where we need to object, where we say, we as the county have an issue, you're not following the statute, or this is going to result in a, in a degrading of the level of service of our infrastructure, whatever the case may be. The process under the Florida law is to go through that intergovernmental dispute resolution process, that our two newest commissioners weren't here last year when we finished up one with the city of Ormond Beach. But you, you might recall how much labor went into that, there's resolutions, there's agreements, there's staff meetings, there are joint meetings of the elected officials. That would be the process that's invoked if we weren't able to work out coordination at this committee staff level. So a lot of conversations need to happen, agreements have to be entered into with various municipalities. We're just now beginning this process. And today, we're here to kind of present these ideas, make it public, and also to take any input from you as to what we've proposed in terms of evaluating the annexations when we do get word of them coming in. We hope that the basic parameters of that memorandum are good with you. If not, or if anything stood out, any red flags, please do let us know. But that is how we intend to proceed now and how we begin this process.
Okay. A question, we've, explain the differences, right, between what we've established with the school district on their ILA interlocal coordinating committee versus what you see additionally. Is there duplication there, or?
Yeah, there could be some duplication. Our comprehensive plan, the proposed new one, does mention that the joint planning committee would also take into account schooling, school facilities. The joint planning committee, the working group at the staff level, and the oversight committee of the elected officials regarding school facility planning is something mandatory under statute. So we have to have that in place, we do have it in place. It, as you may recall, back in 2022, Chair, I can't recall, you may have still been on the school board, or were you a commissioner at that time? Yeah, okay, you were, you were a commissioner. Well, you've seen both sides of that. That is a very, it's important, it's a, it's a long agreement, it involves all the elected boards of the county, and that's not going anywhere, that has to stay in place. There's things that we do every year under that agreement that aren't going to go away. What I'm referring to today goes much beyond school facilities, and the joint planning committees that I'm talking about looks comprehensively at development, whether there's annexations or along boundaries of jurisdictions. You're looking at infrastructure, environment, you know, water, sewer, roads, stormwater, there really, anything's on the table. So it's a, it's a broader scope of work, whereas the school planning is, it's a narrow focus, and that one, as I said, is very much established.
Well, they've morphed into a presentation of development activities, so that there was a kind of a forecasting element to it as they looked at school, student growth and school capacity. So there may be some overlap, just want to make sure that we don't duplicate efforts.
How does it affect, or what's the
How does it affect or what's the, the, what do they take away from the planning, county planning board? Is there an overlap of jobs here?
The committee that I'm referring to is simply at the staff level. So anything that ultimately gets approved in terms of annexation, in terms of development orders or rezonings, comp plan amendments, still would have to go through the same processes they already go through by, by your planning boards.
That's the main difference, is it's, we move from the burdens of, right, elected officials and, and sunshine to staff level conversations then.
Yes. In the, in the past couple of years, you've had myself and Mr. Mengele appearing at municipal meetings trying to voice the concerns of, of you. And I think what we're hoping to do is to establish a process where much, much earlier on, we're voicing and we're, we're involved in, in what our concerns are so that by the time it gets to the elected bodies, hopefully, a lot of that is already addressed.
Any other questions?
I'm sorry. In the first page of your memo, you talk about if the administrator believes sufficient cause exists to object to a proposed annexation, why the administrator and not the planning and development director?
Well.
Let's say they're serving in that role, if they're serving in that role as a joint commission or a joint committee, joint planning committee, why would, why would that person not be coming to us saying this is not going to work out?
I had the same question, I thought maybe it was just a typo or something. Because it says, right, growth management legal review it, results transmitted to the administrator, requesting whether we should file an objection, so you're telling them. It just says, if the administrator believes sufficient cause exists, but I almost feel like that should say legal believes sufficient cause exists, and then the administrator brings it to the board.
That's fine, we were thinking.
Only because, I, I feel like if you're already there detecting whether or not there's an objection to rise, then we, you should, you should just, because you're our legal board, you know, council, you should bring it to the administrator to put in front of us to let us know there's an objection.
Understood.
That's my only thought.
We, we were just thinking of the chain of command that.
No, I, yeah, I just think that like, it should rest with legal to bring it to the, um, to, you, you've said the objection, so why would the administrator get to decide whether or not your objection is wrong, for the board?
Understood.
That's my only thought.
I would say this. The administrator has a wider swath on the issues we're talking about. These are issues of magnitude. These are not issues that you should just relegate to legal. You take the law and you use the law to achieve your ends. We will show how to get it done, we will do and organize the dispute resolution. But you should have that go to your chief operating officer who is looking at many, many issues beyond what we're looking at, how an annexation might affect the delivery of county services. We're not going to know that, we're not going to know that intuitively because we're not involved in operations. So I'm not saying that there's anything deficient in that, but that was the, I was pretty much the one that put the administrator at the top of that. We have to justify to the administrator, we think there's a problem, this is everything we've tried to do, okay. And by the way, remember now, this is the prelude to filing a formal objection. This is for, this is when it gets legalistic, which means that we're going to give them something, which means we're willing to litigate over it if it falls apart. We're willing to go through the dispute resolution system. So this begins where, where it wasn't worked out in the way it should, we think it should have been in joint planning. That's, that's our aim. Now, if for some reason joint planning isn't set up, it still provides, it still provides that same breadth of view that it, that is in this, in the space of the administrator is superior to any view we have. And I also want you to think, I wanted to add this, I started to want to add this. Everything up to now has been ad hoc. It's not systematized. That's why it's, that's why everybody feels like it's a little out of control. Well, what we were doing is we have been administering in effect a 2007 court order among these entities. So it, it's evolved, we're, the joint planning committee that Sean came up with and Adam, I have to give credit to Adam, he did a lot of work on it. That is the answer, it's the, it's the, it's the next era. It's what follows the Water Wars settlement.
So if that's the, that's a proper chain of command, can the verbiage be changed just to, so the administrator does bring to the board, one way or another, how the issue you brought to her was, was resolved?
Absolutely.
Like, we have it baked into the, the process that, you know, it went to the administrator and then they gave a briefing to the board, one way or the other, how they were able to resolve it. So that we know that the board is always in touch with the annexation request, I guess.
And it's absolutely critical to the effective functioning that you know how it's going, what's been solved.
Find out that there was a bunch of it that you guys were objecting to or having issues with, you know, growth management was rising to the level, but then the administration could just simply ship off, you know, and, and clear without board knowledge. It's not, it's not a question, it's not a distrust of, of administration, it's just like.
That's right.
Let's just ensure that we knew that these were coming in and.
Well, and also, okay, if we're pitted against a municipality, that's a serious thing, right? That's a, that's an unordinary thing, right? So we want to make sure that what we're doing is deliberate, that we're thinking about all the consequences. And by passing it through that system, you will be, you should be more confident in the analysis that we give you because we're telling you all the different things we're going to look at.
I would say too, right, the expectation is that our two employees are working in harmony together and talking about these issues, but there's nothing that prohibits our attorney from keeping us in the loop with what they're finding out. So if they feel that there is something that they're sharing with the administrator, I would expect them to get that back to us.
Yeah, I just think it needs to be put in there so that as time goes on, no one forgets that that was the intention, was that we would, the board would get notified one way or the other that they were able to resolve the, the issue.
Sean will fine tune the language.
Yeah, that, that's all, I just want to make sure that we know that like, it just went full circle, right? And, and the board knew and was aware of how it got resolved so that, you know, what do you call it?
I understand, Commissioner.
Yeah, just so that we just know it went through, we didn't miss something.
So one important thing that I found on page three, under character of area, where you talk about the five conditions. For my own small brain, could you talk to me a little bit about developed for urban purposes? Because that one is, is key, whether it's voluntary or involuntary.
That one is probably the most overlooked, but yes, there's a formula in the statute about, I think it says it, two units per acre and, and these formulas. And you're, when a municipality expands, it's not supposed to just grab silver culture lands. You're not supposed to just make a tree farm into your city. It's supposed to be an area that meets objectively measurable criteria in terms of how densely is it already developed. With one exemption, you could have an area further away from the city that's already urbanized and a, a gap in the middle that is not. And they give, the statute gives grace there and says, yes, you can grab that because it's in between your city and an urbanized area. But that, that criteria is one that we really need to take a closer look at because it's been the, it's been abused thus far.
Could we take this discussion and go back a couple of years and talk about these, these requirements? And, and look at the airport commons issue, where I thought we were railroaded on that one. I thought we were, we were totally run over. And so was the developer. And, and I had long chats with the mayor on this about your, you've weaponized the annexation process. You annex, you've, you've made, you've, you've weaponized the water issue, basically. And so I, I was really upset about that whole thing, that we were just steamrolled, that, that should have stayed in the county. But, and if you look at this, these characters of the area, there's not one in here that applies to airport commons because there's no residential there. It was completely, it was completely commercial.
Here is the problem. We couldn't furnish them water. The one possibility was.
Well, the airport water, remember, we, we could have given them water from the airport.
But our agreement with the city relative to, you know, that, you, there is an, an agreement about utilities at the airport with the city prohibits us from making any connections. In other words, they didn't want that to become a source of being able to extend, you know, utility service to.
Okay, that's a given then, that's a given, so they, so.
They left, they definitely leveraged.
The city to go ahead and provide water, but why, why did they then use that as the tool to annex the property and why not just provide them the water? That's what I mean by weaponizing the water. Is, you want water, fine, you have to annex it.
They wouldn't agree to a simple, they, they, they would not agree to extend the water without the other. It was hard, hard, as you know, very hard negotiating. It took, it took quite a while to get through it.
But that's a load of crap.
So with any, with any service provider, I'm going to use Flagler Beach because that's what I'm used to. If, if Veranda Bay gets, stays in the county, but gets their water from Flagler Beach, they'll have a 25% premium on every gallon of water that goes into any house or facility at Veranda Bay. So that, that incentivize, they have the same thing with stormwater bill and same thing on their sewer bill. There, there's all these premiums that you pay if you're out of the city limits. So I only see Veranda Bay as an option for Flagler Beach. It generates more money for the city, but it also costs the developers or the ultimate people that live there more money for water and sewer. Is that enough to get a developer to want to annex, just the mere fact that more money's being paid?
Commissioner Carney, before I answer that, the agreement we have, the county has with Flagler Beach for the John Anderson corridor says that they will not charge the 25% surcharge. That was something we negotiated at the time. It was really for seaside landings, which was actively developing and not Veranda Bay, but it includes the Veranda Bay area. So there won't be a surcharge there. As to why developers choose, I think they're just looking at the path of least resistance. And they're not thinking about who's going to end up paying what millage or impact fees to who. They're just looking to get their approvals and get to the finish line. And the, the, who pays those bills later on, usually the developer is gone and, and it's passed on to the lot owner.
In the case of Veranda Bay, I think they were afraid if the county stayed in charge that the, that we would lean on them about preserving land and all that, which we would, we would. We'd be, we'd be adamant about that. And Flagler Beach may not, they may not hold them to the, what we would do.
Or the density, the density word.
Right, yeah, I think we'd be a lot tougher on them, so.
So you say that the joint planning committee process will take time, it's going to be. So in absence of that, what does that do to pending annexation projects that might fall into the?
We would look at them according to the criteria in that memo and try to assert ourselves more than we have historically and, and, you know, bring it through that chain of command we just mentioned, and if need be, bring it to your attention.
So what, what is out there right now in terms of, I know Veranda Bay is out there, is there others?
I don't have my finger on the pulse of what developers are planning and what.
I just didn't know if we knew of one right now.
No, I, I don't. We, we get a trickle here and there when it's just an individual parcel owner, particularly with Banel. But I'm not aware of any pending subdivisions or large annexations.
That's probably best a question for developments.
So then now, so the question comes down to, I'm just going to ask it. Are we, have we ever, have we come to the conclusion, what about Veranda Bay and exerting any rights of the county? Because I'm, I read through these case laws and I'm going to assume that Veranda Bay annexation does meet some of the, the state statute, does not meet the state statute in terms of enclaves and urbanization, right?
There is an enclave that would be created, created and, you know, I haven't analyzed it, but it likely does not fit the urbanized area, especially west side of John Anderson.
And then in the case of that, then it would be up to, in lieu of not having the planning committee right now, it would be on, upon the board to decide what area we would go from here, right? If there was a, I believe that they're not going forward right now, correct?
We don't know exactly what's going on right now, it's, it is on hold, but we, we have to monitor the city's agenda. We don't know when it may suddenly be on there again. But if, if you want us to give a deeper analysis of the criteria, you know, it has to be co-terminant or contiguous with the city on at least one of its boundaries. If, you know, if they're shop, if they're still shopping around, we don't know if they're looking for Palm Coast versus Flagler Beach. We don't know if they're going to stay in the county. We don't know, we're out of the loop as to what is happening, but we can evaluate their proposal and bring it back to you with, instead of just sort of speaking off the fly. Until now, we weren't opposing the annexation from your direction. We were rather looking at the zoning that they were asking for and voicing our concerns with John Anderson and Beulah Creek, the connector road that, the entrance road that is supposed to be built. So we, until now, we haven't objected to the annexation itself. We were rather concerned with those things I just mentioned, assuming that it was going to annex.
How much, how much enforcement ability do we have, for instance, on them encroaching on the Beulah Creek area?
Well, if they annex into the city, we, we really have none, it's, it's what they've agreed to. They did agree to the, to the buffers we asked for. We, we did not ask them to stay out of the flood zone, but rather a certain distance from the creek or from the wetlands. And they agreed to that.
Okay.
But it's really a matter of them agreeing, we don't have any ability to compel them to do anything once they annex.
So I guess the question is, is, does this board, is there consensus at all from the board to direct legal and growth management to do that formal, was it chapter 171 review?
Yes.
That we're looking at for that particular annexation or for any annexation that we, until they, you know, set up the planning committee and stuff. And so we know of this one, is that something this board wishes to do, I guess? I'll ask the question.
And I, kind of following up on that, my question was like, which can be tied into this one, is what do we expect moving forward? So would we be issuing a clarification or set of expectations to the administrative staff when they do send us the notice of annexation? Because we'll receive a notice from the municipality, such and such property with the legal boundaries is wishing to annex. And that's like the extent that I see that we get.
And it's usually just days before the hearing as well.
So is there the additional information that we require? Can we, can we send that to them that this is moving forward, this is what we expect? And we won't, you know, in order to not go into legal issues, this is the minimum that we expect to see moving forward.
We can make that request, we, we really were coming here today to, to get your input and what you'd like us to do. At the very minimum, I think we should evaluate these annexations on the statutory criteria.
Right.
Beyond that, having a standardized request for certain information, that might be something that would have to be part of a written agreement with these cities, maybe the same agreement that sets up a, a joint committee.
I think all I'm looking for is that they are adhering to statute when they submit the annexation request. That's all, that they comply with it.
As you may have seen in the end of the memo with the case law, it is very difficult to predict how courts would treat any given annexation. And your court opinions are. And your court opinions are, are just written words without the benefit of an illustration or a map. But the courts, I will say, are not always following the statute to the black and white letter. Rather, they apply a qualitative analysis, given the whole context. It is difficult to glean precedent and, and rules. It, it's a little bit all over the place. As Al was saying, the eye of the beholder.
So much for statute.
I saw that in the Deltona one. They went like, yeah, they went sideways. You know, so I guess I'll, I'll just, I'll go back to, until everything is stacked up, should we just allow them to have the work done? So that if the time should come, they'll be prepared. If the board wants to go forward with it or not forward with it on that-
I think if I could just say it like this, at this point, without formal agreements with the cities on, on annexations and joint service boundaries, when we get these notices of annexation, we'll look at them, we'll evaluate them. And if we feel like there is a, that they're problematic, that we would bring them to your attention.
Will you have time, given that most of them don't give a lot of time?
That is a great question.
Kind of like when you know about it, should you, should you just go ahead and, I mean, you're so overwhelmed in legal to begin with.
I want to pick up on a comment that you made. If, if, if what we've outlined to you is something that is, that you can accept, that, okay, this is a good direction, maybe you may want to tweak it here or there, but if this is a good direction, I think, Mr. Chair, what you were saying, should we set expectations? I think that's what you were saying. Should we let them know, independent of any pending annexation, look, we've looked at this issue, we're concerned about it, we want to do a better job on behalf of all of our constituents. So we're, we're going to just let you know that these are the things that we want when you, when you decide you want to annex some part of Flagler County.
Can we require them to give us X number of days' notice? Because, because as we've all seen, it comes in with two or three days. Bang, it's done.
We could, I don't think that we could, we can't legislate what isn't, what isn't in the statute. But I think we can request. And then you'll know how much they honor and respect our input.
The law.
Even with our notice, the municipality has to have a public notice. And to re, there's always an ordinance required from that municipality to read to its own people.
Correct.
So if it has a comp plan, red flag goes up. If it doesn't have a comp plan amendment, then you've got at least two readings to be able to get in there. And just like unfortunately at Veranda Bay, they had to get a lawsuit warning. This would pretty much go hand in hand with what happened at Flagler Beach, correct? We would put them on notice that we're going with a Florida Government Conflict Resolution Act and then take it from there.
If, if they didn't, if there wasn't any indication that they were going to address the issues that we were concerned about, that brought it to our attention.
And we state the reasons for obvious re-
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any way to set up an automatic system that, that would automatically send that out once you receive any kind of notification at all? Or hearsay of something happening anywhere, wherever, if it would be affected by this? Sometimes there's an automatic, you know, resolve, resolution, a discussion to say, well, here's where we stand on this at this moment.
Well, I think, I think Kim's, Kim's point is accurate. They have to, in their own little-
Public notice.
They're trying to, they have to do all those announcements and they're not telling us.
Right.
So when they, when they start that process, as you mentioned, then they should tell us. They should, you know, we should be included on that notification. And I think that would be pretty simple to do, I would think.
Requesting them to do that would be simple.
Right. So they haven't. So that's what I'm saying, when those notices are out, if we're watching notices, and any time a notice comes up with the word annexation, would we have an immediate response? That's my, that's my ask, is wondering if that could be done.
What do you think?
It's a thought. I'm sorry. It's a thought.
We're, we're, we have no choice but to act quickly when we get those notices. I don't know about automatic, but I, I get the idea that it, we need to jump on it and take a look. You're right, right.
But I think we have to prepare them. We have to give them the expectation that that is what we're going to be doing, rather than it coming out of the blue.
Yes. So for this protocol to sit here on this deus and go nowhere is not what the plan is. We need to get this information out. We need to cooperatively handle any questions that they have. And then maybe Adam and his staff might have some, some responses that can come back to us. I don't know. But I think the first step would definitely be a notice of some sort.
I went back through emails. So as an example, from the city of Benel, they sent out a letter, and I'll just use these dates, on October 23rd. So we received notice October 23rd and attached was the, was the ordinance and first reading was November 13th.
Yeah.
So what, how much time, obviously that's, you're looking at a little over two weeks, maybe three weeks. But what's the expectation there?
We're going to be hard pressed. I think in the, I think what we really need to do is have an agreement with these cities that they let us, by the time they send that notice out, they've already been working with the applicant for some time. They know this is shaping up and-
That's the, the committee is actually the solution.
Yes. So everything we're talking about, I think, is the interim. Before we get to having the committee established, what do we do?
Okay.
We're just going to have to do our very best.
I would say in a little more proactive vein, and you know, Chair Dance, we've talked about this in other contexts, we have our staff level people talk to the, their counterparts in all these governments to set expectations. We talk to the attorneys of these jurisdictions and let them know, look, this is really important to us. We're going to be looking at it. We don't want to create any problems. We want it to work smoothly, et cetera, et cetera. Then you, you as commissioners, you see these municipal officials, you know them, and you need to start saying, look, this is what we're going to do, this is why we're going to do it. You know, defang it, obviously, that it is a value, it is a value-added process that we're talking about.
Right.
This will create better, I believe, better decisions. That's why we were willing to spend the amount of time to think this through. So we have to, Sean is right. Until we get a written agreement, nothing's required. But we can set expectations and start moving that forward so that when the time comes for a written agreement, it'll be something they already knew, had a chance to twirl around on their head and think about it, talk to their staffs, and understand that they might get value out of it.
Right. And, and the, it's that the county intends to follow the statutes and there could be court objections, you know, to anything that they try to go forward with, period.
I wouldn't limit it to that.
No.
I'm sorry. Let me, let me say why I don't think that's the best approach. I think that what we should be saying is that we need to evaluate the impact on the delivery of services for everybody. We're going to look at the comp plan issues. I mean, we're talking about in the example that, that Kim provided where, you know, they're going to actually have to do comp plan amendment. I mean, look at, one of the things that I thought, as you all know, I made a big deal out of it in one of my reports, in Veranda Bay, I really was somewhat shocked that the, that the reviewing agencies said, you didn't meet any of our requirements. I mean, it was across the board. It was a strikeout all the way across the board. So, so let's say we had a redo. Let's say we could redo it. If we knew they had to do comprehensive plan things, we'd be tracking what's going on there. What are you submitting to DOT on this issue? We want to see it. We're concerned about traffic impacts. Asking it early on rather than when it's reached almost a crisis level of, of decision-making. And disruptive. I'm sure that was disruptive for them, for us to say, wait a minute, we got all these state reports and you're not complying with anything or you're not substantively addressing these things. I'm sure that was not welcomed.
I was under the assumption that once property was annexed, that the comp plan and rezoning followed because you, the municipality then has to have a comp plan designation that's compliant with, with their comp plan.
Correct. And we need to be involved in that because, you know, they could just do ours, right? Or they could do something different. More than likely, they're going to do something different.
Well, I thought it was mandatory that they-
Oh, they do.
That they, they make, at least if, carry, right, the most similar comp plan designation. But we would need to know if they were going to modify that as well.
Let's say the example you used for October 23, whatever example you used, let's say that was just a single parcel, there are probably no comp plan implications there. They just bring it in under whatever the surrounding, you know, areas already have, they've already established.
So if it was a similar comp plan designation to what the county had, would not really be an issue. It's if it changes. If by annexing in, the, their anticipation is that they're annexing in for a more or for a different comp plan designation.
I would say if it implicates the delivery of governmental services, then it's important enough for us to look at it.
Okay. And, and I'll just say that I think my, right, when we first were talking about annexations, the, the troubling comment was the assertion that we had not been following statute, that it was haphazardly applied. And I think that was an alert, that we don't want to be practicing that kind of-
Absolutely.
You know, when it, to statute, we need to be, so I think that's the expectation too, moving forward, is that we just with, we treat these the way statute wants us. I mean, that's defensible for us. We're able to, yeah, that, that it's the, the proper thing to do and, and that we don't end up 10 years down the road with surprises.
Correct.
Does the, who provides services to the, to the plot, if you will, that's being annexed? Does that play at all?
It could.
Because, for instance, back to Airport Commons, that's the question I raised at the time. Well, who's providing the services? The county is. All for almost everything except their water and sewer. We were providing sheriff, fire-
We do that automatically.
Ambulance, yeah. We were doing everything. They were getting made.
But we do that automatically.
Yeah.
That's a different level of discussion I'd have to have one day was when, which I find problematic is, especially on the Highway 100 corridor, where we have different land use requirements. And if one is less strict than the other, if the county is less strict, right, the, the prior plan of attack was to permit through the county and annex into the city, which, you know, we should have a, in my opinion at least, and maybe it's one of those things we continue to look at moving forward with the comp plan and land, and updates to the Land Development Code is, Highway 100 should be a seamless corridor. You shouldn't know where one jurisdiction stops and the other one starts. It, it should be at least some agreement that it's a, that it's treated similarly. So I, I probably got off topic, but I know-
No, not at all. You know, you, I'm sure you all know, Adam Mingle has been able to negotiate limiting conditions, that they accept some of our limiting conditions in a number of situations.
But Andy, that was, you're exactly right, that the, the Airport Commons thing, they stayed with us because our permitting process was easier to manage. They stayed with us until they got through that whole process and then annexed to the city.
It has, it has been a bit cumbersome on that corridor because our planning board is trying to anticipate the city's code and creating variances for the city's code. The developer perceives our process as less onerous and our impact fees are much lower, but the impact on the community is the same. But they pay our lower impact fees annexed into the city and oftentimes get adjustments that allow for much more intense development. And there is the danger of a hodgepodge of aesthetics when you're applying different standards. It's not an easy thing to solve, but we certainly are aware of that issue.
And in this intergovernmental agreement that we're talking about, is that where we would put transferring the ownership or collection of transportation impact tax or whatever they call it? Is that where that would go? I mean, we're not doing any of it now, so.
It's a, I understand your question. It's a little early to say. I think the, as I envision it now, and things can change, the, the agreement initially would just sort of establish the committee and the flow of information. But what actually comes out of that for any particular development, that, it might be too early to try to spell out all the details of that in this agreement now. I can tell you, Mr. Mingle has begun writing an interlocal with Palm Coast to give transportation impact fees to the city of Palm Coast for the Seminole Wood State Road 100 intersection area, because we all know that that needs help. And it's not that much money in the grand scheme of things, but certainly it'll help. But getting back to your question, it's going to be hard to get into that level of detail now, but maybe after we've established the committee and we've gone through a few of these, we can amend it to get more specific.
Well, that was another driving force on why we, why we talked about this, is because there's nothing out there for that either.
Were you, I took from your question that it also embraced development-specific conditions. Not necessarily a principle that applies to everything, but looking at a particular situation, particular land, the existing services, the proposed services, the proposed intensity, what are the things that we can use to ameliorate any failure or duplication of service? More efficient.
Okay. So is everybody in agreement with that, that we move forward with this plan? Okay. All right.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll take a five-minute break. Take a five-minute break. We'll, then we'll do public comment.
comment.
All right, everybody. If you can find your seats, we'll go ahead and get reconvened. You ready, Carlos? All right, got the thumbs up. All right, we're back from break. We just finished discussion on annexation, have not gone to public comment yet, so we will go, before we move on to other issues, we'll go and see if, we'll open up public comment for, is there any questions on the capital projects or on annexation. You can come forward and address the commission on those two items. State your name.
Anderson. And I'm here because I was watching yous on TV, so more relaxing, you know, kicking back on the sofa. But you were hitting a subject, and I'm glad the county is moving in that direction, talking about annexing and annex issues. And my development is called River Beach Subdivision. And I talked to the subdivision north of me, and they had their own issues. But we're all, a lot of your incorporated places are, is a mess. And one of them, one up north is a mess. And you have over 900 incorporated, you know, subdivisions, you know, businesses and all that other stuff. And it's all a mess. I mean, I talked to business owners that told me if their business got destroyed 5% or more, they'd have to move the whole operation. And a lot of them said they would just walk away, because it wouldn't, it wouldn't give them what they have now. So there's a lot of things that you guys are probably bringing up in that annex issue. And it has nothing to do with yous, it's just that we need help. I was telling the previous commission at the planning and stuff to, you know, help us out, because I'm trying to do it, and a bunch of neighbors are behind me. But the problem we have, we have utilities, if we're going to do our roadways proper to the center line. We have utilities in the way. Not so much of the power poles, they're actually set back properly. It's like the telephones and the old cable TV boxes and high internet cable is actually in our right of way for, if we would put a established roadway in there, a proper roadway. Because right now, our roadways are not even on the center line. It's a mess. And I don't know how we got there, but we were subdivided in '59. And just talking to the subdivision up north and their history, and their father used to live there, and they were surveyors and bah, 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 and they got in a dispute. And there's one issue where I want to try to change our covenants, because in our covenants, we have property lot, I think it's four, four and six is not included into our easements. I asked why, and a young lady said, oh, my father used to live over there, and they got in a dispute with the developer, and he took them off it. So I like to try to get this corrected, I mean, because we should all be sharing. I mean, we all share the same neighborhood. So I appreciate that the county's going in that direction, because that's, that's really, really, really needed. And I hope we can get all, even the corporations together, and that are incorporated together to do the, thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Now's the time.
Chairman, I'm John Tanner. I am here as the attorney for Preserve Flagler Beach and Beale Creek, Inc. And I would ask the commission to allow me a little more than three minutes. I don't believe my comments at this time are going to be under the public comment category. I'm going back up. First of all, I guess the simplest on the capital project update, that is a matter of, I think, size and purpose. I've traveled the country, and most of you have, and I've not seen anything like the center being proposed for the trailheads here in Flagler County. The Graham Swamp Trailhead has a really good welcome center. They have signs, they have an outhouse, they have a place where people park their bikes and their cars, and they go out on the trails. The center proposed, I believe, could be scaled back considerably and still serve the purpose. It's like building a massive complex in a sensitive area, so you can show slides about a sensitive area, where it used to be. And so I think that that's something you can just look at, probably size and conquer that problem. But the annexation discussion is going to take a few more moments, and is actually the legal issue that I'm here about. And first of all, we had a problem in Flagler Beach with notice. The notice they sent out initially indicated that they were going to discuss having the ordinance comply with state law. Well, the ordinance already did comply with state law. What the discussion was really about was annexation. And the word annexation appeared nowhere in the notice. I pointed that out to the county attorney, or to the city attorney, and to the commission. And they finally got a notice together that did at least let the public know the next time they discussed it, annexation would be an issue. So they had moved into actually an area of taking away the citizens' vote to, right to a referendum vote, and put it in the hands of as little as three city commissioners, when it would be an annexation of over 5% of the city geographic area. And the public didn't even know that was done. When they finally learned about it, there was considerable turnout, and they were not able to have room for people in the meetings. Then they have had several meetings since then, and they would amend what they were doing, have the county attorney be amending, and they'd be discussing how to change the ordinance. So I think we're still, in the city, I think they're quite away from reaching a proper attempt to amend the ordinance that they drafted. So that's, that's a matter that they have to deal with when we get to it. But the county has significant interest in this and I think every other annexation. The annexation proposed, which has been stopped because of the enclave issue there with the Veranda Bay, that annexation that was being proposed, the developer was demanding that the city agree to 2,000 or more dwelling units, up to 2,700 dwelling units, a 600% increase over what that developer, the very same developer fought so hard to get, a 600% increase. That's where the county, I believe, should step in on behalf of county residents. The people that live along John Anderson, it's been called a state scenic highway for a long, long time. I think back in the late 1800s, it got labeled, maybe 1900, maybe the early 1900s, got labeled a scenic highway. You drive down John Anderson, you don't see much like that anywhere along coastal Florida, and it's one of the last few such communities in Flagler Beach. So just that community and that highway is deserving of protection. Beale Creek is a significantly unique, classic, protected waterway under Florida's, Florida's waterway systems. It's not only a canoe trail, but you have actually otter, you have manatee, you have gators, and you have actually sharks in Beale Creek. It's just one of those rare places. There's not much places like that in the world, let alone here in Flagler. That's an acreage that we are working very hard to develop financial support for. We have the, the state is interested. We know the state is allowing, I think they have now 500 million funds, 500 million in funds available for recreational purposes. The headwaters of Beale Creek, properly managed, not with outboard motor boats, but the canoes, and kayaks, and non-motorized bicycles, would be a tremendous tourist attraction without a several million dollar building. And it would be largely self-supporting, that would not require concessions, wouldn't require employees, except perhaps for the outdoor facilities that is necessary to make people comfortable. The bottom line on annexation, I believe, is that we have to have a method of controlling what's been going on. Because had the county not involved, gotten involved, had we not gotten involved as a nonprofit, they would have gone with an annexation that would have put 2,000 to 2,700 units right there at the foot of the Flagler Bridge on John Anderson. Absolutely destroy the quality of life in that area with guarded traffic, increased, all the increase that population brings. You know, there's a myth out there that development and more roofs spread the tax base. The studies show that's just not so. There never in the history of man has increased in population resulted in lower taxes. Can anyone cite a single incident where increase in population has decreased taxes? It just doesn't. So there's no advantage to the city, there's no advantage to the citizens, and there's certainly no advantage to the headwaters of Beale Creek, which is a very special area, and John Anderson Highway. So I'm glad you're involved, and we will, we'll keep working with the city, see we can help them do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you for comments. Thank you, sir.
K. L. Hathaway, 5305, John Anderson Highway. I just kind of come up here, I'm not going to try to repeat too much to make this quick, but I want to echo the statements and sentiments that I think it's why I applaud the importance of getting involved in the annexation. I think throughout the process of Veranda Bay, we found that the county was not involved whatsoever, even though that is county land. And I think this applies not just to Veranda Bay, but to everything, as we have, as mentioned up here before, that there is a plethora of other incidents this has occurred in. And without county cooperation, you see cities pretty much taking land and removing all regulation that was on those lands and doing whatever they want from them. Mostly in that case is for developments to increase in size substantially. And Veranda Bay, I think it's a perfect example. And I think that's the priority is to, as I am representing for Flagler and kind of this idea of conservation and just planning the future properly, you know, a lot of these incidents have not been planned appropriately, especially Veranda Bay. It was just a massive increase in density and population. And so in the end, you know, it's better to just have this cooperation. And I think there's a priority to bring inter-local cooperation together. So I think the board that has been proposed would better substantially the negotiations that would occur. And in total, you know, again, we had to step in as a nonprofit organization, as just citizens to step in to try to stop this, slow it down. That probably shouldn't ever happen in the first place. So it's definitely a priority to like actually have the, you know, the county and the cities to work together, so these issues don't, you know, occur afterwards. But yeah, I think the land there, especially in Veranda Bay, and land anywhere has to be protected. So we're talking about community, we're talking about environmental, we're talking about many factors of our, the future and our, just our county entirely is at risk through the annexations. So yeah, that's kind of my, you know, my statements. I'm glad that I was able to attend this meeting and see this, because it's an important topic. And I'm hoping it moves forward and we see more development on it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, I know, just to clarify one thing, Mr. Hathaway, right? It's not that the county's not involved. The county's sent Mr. Moylan to those meetings to specifically articulate the county's concerns at the point. I think the point we're trying to clarify is earlier on, the coordination- I think the point we're trying to clarify is, earlier on, the coordination, which may help enhance some other issues that, like, the ones that the state identified in their And seeing no other public comment, we'll go ahead and close public comment and go back to our final item, which is the comp plan. Don't want to put a speed rush on you, Simone, but that's what happens when you're third out of three items. Well, we would like to not carry this right through to 5 o'clock, please. Yes, sir. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Simone Kenny. This is our now-third workshop on the comprehensive plan update. Again, I'll very quickly go over what we've done so far, very quickly summarize the public input, and then get into the element updates. Again, the comprehensive plan is our long-range visioning document, helps residents identify their vision for the future of their community, helps coordinate local decision-making, and provides guidance to landowners and developers. All of our information can be found on the project website at tinyurl.com/flagler2050. Again, we'll be, after this, we'll have one more public workshop that takes us into April, and then we'll move on to our transmittal hearings, gets transmitted to the state, they send it back with comments. We have 180 days to incorporate those comments and then adopt. So hopefully, that'll put us before the end of the summer. Through our public engagement, again, which consisted of three public workshops, stakeholder meetings, input into our website, all of that culminated into our 2050 Community Vision Statement, which states that "In the year 2050, Flagler County will represent the best Florida has to offer: scenic waterfronts, working farmlands, and charming rural communities preserved through the strategic cultivation and growth of walkable and vibrant neighborhoods, served by resilient and sustainable infrastructure." And then we have our 11 Vision Directives, which I think by this point, I don't have to read through all of them one by one again. Which brings us into our housing element. I do want to preface, as this is still being workshopped by our A-hack Committee, they have seen it at their two previous meetings, but they wanted to see it one more time. So it'll be going to their next A-hack meeting on March 25th. And should there be any substantial changes or comments that they have, I will then bring it back to the board at our last workshop with you guys, which should be April 7th, I believe. So the purpose of the housing element is to ensure that Flagler County regulates residential development in a manner that can equitably, efficiently, and effectively meet the housing needs of the community's existing and projected populations. The related vision directive that we got from the public engagement was that to cultivate a more affordable and diverse housing market. And some of the strategies that the public identified were to prioritize affordable housing opportunities for low-income seniors, to allow ADUs in residential zoning districts, and to allow for missing-middle housing in appropriate future land use categories. And then all of this culminated into our overall housing goal, HOU 1, which is to ensure quality housing in all neighborhoods at affordable costs to meet the needs of all resident and future residents of Flagler County. This element has seven objectives to meet that goal. I really wanted to highlight Objective 1.2, that the county would continue to review and revise its ordinances, codes, regulations, and the permitting process to allow for a diversity of housing options to meet the needs of all current and future residents. And then, so moving into the policies, that really relates to Policy 1.2.2, that the county shall adopt land development regulations that permit the construction of accessory dwelling units within single-family zoning districts. I do want to bring attention that there is a bill going through the legislature right now that would preempt local governments from prohibiting that. But even if that does go through, we did want to include it in the comp plan, just because that is a housing strategy that we've seen work elsewhere, and that did come up in our public engagement and did come up in our A-hack meetings as well. So then, moving back up to Policy 1.1.6, the county shall assist affordable housing developers in the development of interspersed housing rather than concentrating affordable units in single locations. That's really looking towards the future, that if we do get some affordable housing projects in the county down the line, we wouldn't group them all, you know, in the same area. We do want them to be integrated into our existing neighborhoods throughout the county. And then, Policy 1.2.3, the county would coordinate with the Affordable Housing Committee to identify and develop a housing strategy to prevent, for seniors, to prevent homelessness. So for example, one of those strategies could be going back to the ADUs, the accessory dwelling units, kind of allowing or permitting to allow for mother-in-law suites, which we do now. We don't permit for a fully second dwelling unit, which by our code is distinguished by a stove top. That's how we would consider a second dwelling to be a full dwelling. But a strategy like this can really allow for aging in place, for multi-generational living. Again, that's just one strategy that could come out of that. And then, Policy 1.6.7, the county will help to assure that affordable housing, standard housing is available to displaced persons if the displacement is the result of an adopted redevelopment plan and is not the result of enforcement activities. Again, that is also a very broad, future-looking policy. How that would most likely look like in the county is if there was an area that was substantially damaged, for example, during a hurricane, and the county did want to establish a redevelopment plan for that area, you know, that we would take into account and plan for where those current residents would be able to live during that redevelopment process.
Don't we, your issue about the second stove top, don't we get around that with 1.2.2, saying that we're going to approve accessory dwelling units?
Yeah.
So that gets us around that, right?
Yes, that was just relating one policy to the other, how the ADUs could be used as a strategy.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
Again, these four policies are really just mainly updated policies in the housing element. But were there any questions so far?
Mr. Hanson.
I didn't read anything about, one of the things that's important about affordable housing is that they're built in, and I agree completely, we don't want them all in one area. On the other hand, you want them in areas where they can get to the publics, or get to the CVS, or the Walgreens, or whatever. We don't say anything about that in our, I didn't catch it, anyway, in our write-up. Was there something in there, and I missed it?
That would fall more under Objective 1.4. The county would monitor and maintain the adequate provision and siting of housing for target populations. So it's a policy under there that, you know, affordable housing be located in a location that, again, has those services and needs available to it.
So you think we're covered on that?
Yeah, there are more policies. That's just the objective, there's more policies underneath that. But I will double-check all of those.
Okay. I didn't pick up on that. That didn't strike me as what answered my question, but that's okay.
I would say within the LDC, too, are, the PUD, our Affordable PUD ordinance dictates the inclusion of...
Stuff like that.
Yeah, within proximity to...
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. I do have a question. I did not see any verbiage on "live local." I know we have a consultant working on this, there was nothing about "live local" on any... Or did I miss it?
No, there is no policy referencing the "live local." That's still kind of being workshopped. Again, we might be talking about that at A-hack. The one concern from the staff level is we don't want a policy that's too specific towards "live local," just because it is changing quite substantially with each legislative session. So we don't want to be referencing specific policies under "live local" that could be changed by next year.
Probably getting another one. So...
We could have a...
I think avoiding it completely, if you don't want to call it that, I think the spirit of "live local" or something, because we don't have any reference, we don't even have an ordinance yet. So we at least need to get an ordinance or something produced where we're opening the If this is not going to be looked at for 10 years, I'm fine with not using the words "live local," but there needs to be some reference to, it's statutory. So I'd like to see something a little bit in there. And you might hit that at A-hack. You're probably going to get hit with that at A-hack.
And I would agree. I think that the, with Simone's suggestion that it's more suited to an ordinance or to the LDC than to, because this affordable housing, which is the gist of "live local," is what we're talking about now. The specifics of how that statute applies to us can be dictated within our specific ordinance or within the LDC, would be my suggestion, anyway. I don't know that it has to be specifically called out in the comp plan.
But this is a conversation that we'll bring to A-hack again. All right. Our next element was the economic development element, with the purpose of which is to address the county's current economic issues and anticipated challenges. This element is not required by Florida statutes, but the board did elect, we did have it in our past comprehensive plan, and the board elected to continue that moving forward because it is important enough to warrant careful consideration during the comprehensive plan process. The related vision directive that we got from the public engagement was to diversify local industry and employment opportunities. Some of those strategies that the public identified were to develop a plan for creating a covered outdoor arena, meeting space, to incentivize trade schools and apprentice programs to ensure a clear conduit between the in-demand labor force and employers, to identify and incentivize local targeted industries, to promote heritage, eco, and agritourism opportunities in the county, and to create a strategic economic development plan and incentives. All of these formulated are four goals, whereas all our other elements usually have one or two goals. Economic development covers such a wide variety of issues that they couldn't really be conglomerated into one. So Goal 1 was that the county should diversify and enhance the tax base to improve the local economy. Goal 2 was that the county would strive to improve the quality of jobs for Flagler County workers through various economic and workforce development efforts. Goal 3 was the county should strike an appropriate balance between the development of the economy and enhanced quality of life. And that Goal 4, the county shall maintain a strong tourism industry by implementing the tourist development strategic plan to promote leisure, business travel groups, ecotourism, and sports-related tourism. This element had eight...
Can I just send you back? Could you go... So, under your goals, where it says "improve the local economy and improve the quality of jobs," does your data and analysis show what our current situation looks like? So there's a benchmark as to what we're going to move toward improving?
It does. I...
I don't need to see it, as long as I know you have it. Thank you.
I do. So we have our eight objectives, and there were three that I really wanted to highlight. That's Objective 2.2, that the county would pursue various policies, partnerships, and mechanisms that promote the development and provision of attainable housing opportunities for workers residing in the county. This objective is a new objective with all new policies specifically related to workforce housing. These are additional housing policies that could have been included in the housing element, but because they have a more direct tie to economic development, we kept them in this element, but they do relate to the housing element as well. And we have Objective 2.3, that the county would support K-12 education programs and technical and college-level courses, which provide an educated, workplace-ready workforce. And then Objective 4.1, the county would conserve and enhance natural and recreational resources that provide the foundation of the county's tourism, recreation, and retirement-based economic centers.
I agree with 2.3, but I think we're, we kind of get out of our lane a little bit on that. I mean, I, you know, we do the, we support the firefighters, do all that kind of stuff, but I think as Admiral, we have that in there, but we have to be careful. We're going to, you know, we will get out of our lane if we try to tell the school board what to do.
Yeah. It's mainly soft policies, saying that we, you know, we support and we encourage, but there's no actually really guiding or requirements for those providers.
Yeah, when I read it, I just said, whoops, a little alarm went off in my head. Okay. All right.
And then, highlighting the main policy changes, again, all of those 2.2 policies are related to encouraging workforce housing. And again, these are also relating towards, I don't have it in front of me, but one of the policies from the strategic plan, that's where a lot of this information came from. And then, we have Policy 4.1.4, the county shall continue the visual and performing arts, support the visual and performing arts and their related businesses. The county shall continue to support organizations and agencies that stage destination-defining events, which enhance the tourism experience. The county should promote a regional sports complex capable of hosting tournaments and support local youth sports programming, and that the county should promote year-round tourism, which is one of our largest economic sectors, to moderate seasonal employment fluctuations in the retail and service sectors. All right. And then our last element of the day is the capital improvements element, which you, I know you heard about today, the purpose of which is to compile the list of potential improvements to public facilities identified in all of the other elements and their potential funding sources. And it also determines our level of service for the county, which in the Growth Management Department relates more so towards future land use changes and rezonings, and making sure that these development changes maintain or improve the level of service to our residents. So because the capital improvements element pretty much directly relates to all of the other elements, it's, you know, how we, what projects are implementing those policies, there's quite a few related vision directives, including increasing resiliency against natural disasters, establishing multi-use trail network, improving drainage systems, maintaining and improving public facilities and services, and ensuring a sufficient and clean water supply. All of this bringing us to our overarching goal, that the county will ensure the provision of adequate public facilities to all residents within its jurisdiction as determined by the adopted level of service standards. And then, when a five-year capital plan is adopted, it will be an appendix to the county's capital improvements elements and shall be provided to the Florida Department of Commerce or successor agency. Again, that's state statute requirement language. Here we have eight elements again. And just because of previous conversations today, I do want to bring attention to Objective 1.1 and 1.2, that the county will continue to implement a concurrency management system that is coordinated with local governments, as well as quasi-governmental authorities and private providers to ensure existing and future developments are served with sufficient facilities and services related to sanitary sewers, solid waste, potable water, parks and recreation, schools, and transportation facilities. Again, as you know, the county itself is not a utility provider, so we can't directly ensure that a certain level of service of water or sanitary can be guaranteed to these developers. The only method or strategy that we have is coordinating with the local governments that do provide those services. So that's another topic of conversation that could be included in the Joint Planning Committee. And then, Objective 1.2, which is more specific towards transportation and the long transportation concurrency management, long-range transportation concurrency management system, and involving that as well with the Joint Planning Committee, and eventually coming up with a joint planning agreement, inter-local agreement, inter-local service boundary agreement, or memorandum of understanding for the purposes of maintaining or improving those adopted levels of service.
When we're done here, would you explain to me Table J1, just after we're all done?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so I did just want to include the policies that are our adopted level of service. This is the first policy in the element. Our potable water is 125 gallons per person per day, and that ends up being about 300 gallons per equivalent residential unit with an average population of 2.4 people per unit. These are the numerical criteria that... that we use when we're analyzing a proposed future land use amendment or rezoning. This is really what's the basis of the staff report is. Our wastewater criteria is 110 gallons per day. Solid waste is 9.3 pounds per day. And then for transportation, we have our our adopted level of service, which you did see in last workshop in the transportation element. Again, bringing attention that the level of service for the urbanized and rural principal arterials, again, that's I-95 within the county, have been updated to match FDOT standards, just because they are the entity with jurisdiction over I-95. And then we have our recreation and open space level of service, which is really that for countywide, we require on average that we have 30 acres of park space for every 1,000 people. So that's calculated at the county-wide scale. And then the community scale, usually the different plan developments that come in, that they have at least three acres of parks or open space per 1,000 people. And then on a neighborhood scale, arguably that's more so our straight zoning, non-planned unit development areas, that they have a level of service of one acre per 1,000 people. So that'd be more applicable toward an area like Daytona North. And then finally, our stormwater and drainage. Again, we have this requirement in our comprehensive plan. It is permitted and approved through the St. John's River Water Management District. So this matches the the district's requirements. They approve it, but we do have our our development engineer that that reviews as well. And they require developments or redevelopment activities are designed to the 25-year, 24-hour duration design storm, and that all post-development runoff do not exceed redevelopment conditions. Again, we require that the stormwater engineering design and construction standards for our own systems are provided, that erosion and sediment controls are used during development, and that periodic inspection and maintenance of onsite systems is ensured as a condition of system permit approval. And then our water quality requirements, which match Florida statute.
All right, so on item F, I don't know that that 1A is, should just be generalized. I think it's more site-specific. So is there any different required best practices or standards that where we can incorporate more intense stor- storage than what's shown there? Especially, you know, the what comes to mind is adjacencies to, like OSW's outstanding Florida waters. I think there's different levels of safety that we want to get into, either in areas within drainage basins that may be impacted already. I don't know that I want to just get into one blanket statement like that.
I think in that case, that is mentioned than in the 2B, that any discharge into Florida outstanding waters is prohibited or that the filter is used. Again, getting more specific gets a little tricky, just because this is ultimately permitted and approved through the water district.
I guess I would just want to make sure that when we get to the LDC part, we aren't restricted to implementing more restrictive standards in the LDC. Because we can be more restrictive than the water management district. We don't have to just default to them.
Okay.
And we've, you know, in recent past, we've demanded curb and drainage system not swells and that it go into a holding area on the site.
And actually, water quality under 2B, which you stated, is actually the new state law. It's, that's the one that requires two, two, two different trains of filtration, not just pond and discharge. So.
Okay, so do you want the the language to be broader or more specific? Or just have a statement that, you know, obviously, that that's specific.
Maybe dated or changing within time, you know, put in that time factor in there?
I just don't want to be, I guess, I don't want to be stuck to where, when we get to the LDC time, we're, we're, we're bound to what we've stated in in the comp plan, and we can't be more restrictive depending on circumstances.
Okay, we will work out the language on that. Were there any other questions?
We can do it afterwards. J1.
Yes.
Commissioner, your mic.
Sorry. Thank you. The airport zoning overlay, if you read in the guidebook provided by the airport land use compatibility guidebook provided by the state, it talks about a comprehensive plan alignment. And it specifically talks about an airport, if you have one, should appear in transportation element, future land use element, intergovernmental coordination element, and capital improvement element. I did see it in the transportation element, but just for a looksee on, to meet this comprehensive plan alignment requirement, if you could just double-check on that for me.
I will. Any other questions?
Any other questions for Simone?
Yeah. We have our our next workshop, which April 7th, that'll be future land use. And then should there be substantial changes to the housing element out of A-hack? I'll bring housing with it as well. Yes.
Okay, thanks.
So that should take us to the beginning of April. Again, then transmittal hearings, transmitting to the state, 180 days to incorporate their comments, adoption, and then finally in the fall, beginning with our LDC rewrite. All right, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Your table, did you get your question? Oh, afterwards. Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right. County administrator, anything else for today's agenda? Okay. All right. At this time, we'll open up for public comment if there's anybody that wishes to address the public on the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, my name is Raymond Royer, Painters Hill section. Yeah, I've been reviewing your plans and I come from a fire safety side. I'm a retired firefighter and star swimmer for the Navy. And so I've done a lot of service for public in different aspects. I talked to the fire chief, I talked to the sheriff. I want to graduate the board. I don't know if these all are members, but in the last four or five years, you've have done a tremendous job is implementing more money to the public service in the safety side. It was lacking. It's kind of still lacking. The fire department's still kind of behind 40 years in some operations standpoints. The chief told me he's got to submit a new budget. I listened to him. I said, good, I'm going to back him for that. And one of the issues that he has, we lost the fire chief over it because it became political and and city commissioners, well, city council, which blame on the fire chief, but he put it in the budget. But outside of that, he lost his job over it. And the issue that I'm going to mention is they need second gear. Now, we went through that 20 years ago, and second gear, fire gear is needed because when you get your gear wet, then you go to another fire or something like that, what happens? It, you develop a steam element inside your gear and it can burn and make your job difficult. And and that year that we tried to get our second gear, we also won a year and a half with turnout gear that we had. Our first gear was actually a year and a half expired. So we had budget issues, you know, within a city of 130,000 people. So, yeah, so I don't want to say that you sir are not doing a good job. It's just that you, you guys are really moving forward and I appreciate it. And just keep in mind when the budgets come up to listen to your department heads, because, you know, while we do have our issues, they're the ones out there putting our lives in danger. Thank you.
Thank you. Need a public comment? All right, seeing none, I'll bring you back to have a motion to adjourn.
Okay.
All right, thank you. See everybody back here at 5 o'clock for the regular meeting. Thank you.